We're going to call the meeting to order. We will begin with the pledge and invocation. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Mike Colmier and the invocation will be led by Bob Heinzelman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you for the daily bread that you provide to each and every one of us, Lord, and we thank you for the blessings that we receive individually as individuals, as community members, as leaders, Lord. We thank you for our municipal leaders, our state and our federal leaders, Lord. We ask that you please give them guidance, give them judgment, good judgment, Lord, and we ask that you be with them in the decisions that they make every day on our behalf, Lord. We thank you for all of those that put themselves in the line of fire on our behalf, Lord, the ones that go to the front lines and take care of the things that give us the freedom that we get to enjoy every day, Lord. We're just so grateful for that, Lord. We ask that you be with us during this meeting tonight, that it would go well, that we would make good decisions on behalf of the city of Chavano Park, and, Lord, we thank you for your son. It's in Jesus's name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Bill, would you, Xena, would you hand me the... Item number three, citizens to be heard. Basil, would you come forward and give your full name and your address? Basil? Give your full name and your address, and you're the first speaker. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. I am Basil Karcher. I live at 100 Warbler Way and the corner of Northwest Military Highway where the rock wall has collapsed again, and I'm taking this opportunity to tell you why the wall is falling down. If you'll pardon me for reading this, I have it pegged at three minutes, so I don't want to lose my place. When Chavano Park Estates was platted in 1983, there existed an old two-foot-high rock wall with cedar posts embedded and strung with goat wire. In 1990, Chavano Park City Council petitioned the developers, Denton and Rogers, to provide a promised rock wall six feet high. So Denton had the existing two-foot wall added to to create a six-foot wall. Ten years ago, when a small section crumbled in my front yard, I contacted several rock masons for repairing bids. One, a Mr. Mills, the company is now Mills Brothers Masonry, told me that he had built the upper four feet of the wall. He said, quote, "Denton had him raise the wall against his recommendations." He said that the two-foot wall had no foundation, no reinforcements, and was just sitting on top of dirt and could not support the weight of four more feet of rock. It would eventually fall down of its own weight," end quote. Denton insisted, and Mr. Mills said he would only raise the wall if Denton would give him a release of liability because in a few years it would collapse. So, a pseudo-wall hollow with no reinforcement concrete or steel or pipes inside, very little cement and no cap was built. At that time, the city building inspector was Stan Riley, who should have overseen the project. But Chavano Park allowed it to be constructed on private property without following the city building code for rock walls. The old wall should have been removed and a new wall constructed in its place. At this point in 1990, Denton, Rogers and Chavano Park created a major financial liability for dozens of property owners along Military Highway. I would like to point out also that Chavano Park Estates is the only subdivision within Chavano Park with a rock wall that is not covered by the homeowners association that is responsible for the wall, and all of these walls were built to city code so as not to fall down. Over the last ten years, I have personally spent over $25,000 repairing and replacing sections of the wall. I've had six-foot-tall, four-inch steel pipes set two feet in concrete, ten feet apart to retain the wall from falling. It hasn't worked, and the eyesore along Military Highway is obvious. At the moment, I have over 150 feet of wall that needs to be torn down and rebuilt. My neighbors have also spent thousands of dollars as well repairing the wall. This has created a real financial liability for the property owners whose land the wall is on. Excuse me. Since city manager Hill is going to address this later in the meeting, I will add no more than this. We at Chavano Park have a real eyesore in a wall that doesn't represent the beauty of our city. The problem was created by a previous city government and Rogers and Denton developers, and I think they should take the responsibility for correcting the situation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Basil. The next speaker is going to be Lowell Goodman, followed by Dagny Florine. Dagny, if you'd be prepared to speak after Lowell does. Lowell, if you'd give your full name and where you live.
Yes, sir. Lowell Goodman. I live in 103 Happy Trail. Excuse me, I do not have as eloquently a statement prepared, but I also have issues with my wall. I've lived here 13 years. I've repaired it twice, and as y'all have probably seen, it needs repair again. And I'm here in support of Basil and for everybody else who fronts that area and just how poorly that wall was initially built. In addition to the foundation, there's actual holes in the wall you can see through. The thing is, if it hasn't fallen down yet, it's going to soon. So it does need to be addressed and taken care of, and that's why I'm here this evening. I'd like to hear what y'all have to say about that.
Thank you, Lowell. Appreciate that. Dagny, followed by MJ Smoot. MJ, if you'd be prepared to speak.
Dagny Florine, 111 Post Oakway. I am not going to be as eloquent as those folks either. I attended a planning and zoning meeting a couple weeks back, and that was the first time I'd really seen the scope of the project that's going to be taking place on Northwest Military. And honestly, I was taken aback at the magnitude of that scope and potential costs to the city of Chavano Park if the water mains have to be moved alongside the road and the city has to pay for them. And then tonight, I was briefing through the packet, and I saw the drainage results, the drainage study results, and the cost of those projects, which are also in the multi-millions of dollars. And I got to thinking, well, where are we going to get the money to pay for all of this? And then certainly some citizens here tonight have some very legitimate claims, I think. And so it comes down to either money that we already have, or we're going to have to issue a bond or two. Now, I was here, our family moved here in 1998, and since then, there have been three major bonds issued by the city. One in 2000, one in 2004, and then the Trinity Well Bond was in 2009, and the principal on that one was 2.9 million. Of course, that doesn't include the cost of funds, which, if you add in interest, takes it up about, who knows, 40, 50, 70 percent, depends on what the interest rate is. I have two comments about this latter possibility that we may be having to issue a bond, or there may be discussion about that. Number one is, I agree with Susan Combs, our former state comptroller, when she said that any municipality who issues a bond absolutely needs to put it up to the citizens for a vote. In the past, at least to the best of my recollection, that has not happened in Chavano Park. Bonds have been decided on behind closed doors, and I would strongly urge you not to do that in the future. And then, secondly, if a bond is put up for a vote, which I hope it is, you include not just the cost of principal in terms of paying it back, but also the interest, because that gives the full scope of the cost of that bond to the citizens of the city. Thank you.
MJ Smoot.
Good evening, MJ Smoot, 101 Chavano Drive. Happy Thanksgiving, and I'm asking you to not put any items on the December agenda. I like the way y'all were looking at everybody else, because I really enjoyed missing the December meeting last year, so I hope that that continues. And I'm really looking forward to the December 8 P&amp;Z meeting where we'll have the public hearing on the Northwest Military Development, which does affect all of us. I have several items. I'm just going to go down the list. On 6.3, I am in favor of what Mike Simpson has been presenting month after month, and that is to close the loopholes that make Chavano Park gullible to being sued regarding the sign ordinance restriction on City Hall and restricting public speech regarding that. On 6.4, it's a fabulous plan KFW has come up with. There is no plan of action. You list a lot of information, but there's no plan of action as usual. On 6.5, I'm in favor of all of our equipment being where the citizens can be heard clearly. And in San Antonio and other cities, they have a machine where when they bring a picture, it can be put on the screen. Also, I'd like to see that part of this upgrade. On 6.6, I'm one of the four Arbor Day committee members, and Mary Ann came and attended the meeting this month, and we do not want a fundraiser. We are not wanting a fundraiser with that Fiesta medal. What we pitched it back, and Mary Ann actually withdrew this, we are in favor of Chavano Park City doing the medal as PR. We don't want a fundraiser. That's just me speaking for myself. And then going on to 6.9, approving City Hall security measures and making TSA look alike. I would like to see as much time and effort spent into real-time communication with the residents regarding the robberies and the thefts. We have five burglaries in October on this report, and the thing about me is I read all those 438 pages in the agenda, and even if you don't tell us when it's happening, we are going to find it. But in real time, the citizen that was the most important in contacting, in arresting that last robber is in this audience tonight, and that's because Neighborhood Watch works. We are not an event, and I'm just a captain. We are not an event. Once a year, we're 365/24/7. So when we get the word out to each other through Neighborhood Watch, we're on alert and we can put a stop to some of this. So I am not in favor of all that TSA, you know, machine and all of that. What really makes me feel unsafe in this building is that sign at the front that says "No guns." I've gone to several state governor inauguration balls, and there's no security. And the reason is because everybody's caring, and only a fool would come in there and pull a gun. God bless y'all.
Okay, item four on the agenda, council member comments. Mike Simpson?
Thank you all for coming. I hope you had a happy Thanksgiving, and I want to thank the staff that helped put on the Veterans Day program here. I want to thank the citizens who attended and brought their friends. By my count, there were about 65 folks. We ran out of seats. Everyone seemed to have a good time, and thanks especially for those of you who brought the refreshments that we enjoyed afterwards. Hopefully, we can make this an annual event to honor the veterans in Chavano Park. Thanks again for coming.
Michelle?
Thank you all for coming.
Bob?
Thank you for coming and appreciate your input tonight.
And Mike?
Thank you for coming. Glad to see everybody here.
Okay, brings us to item five, announcements, holiday event. Michelle?
Well, the annual holiday event is this Saturday. I hope to see everybody there. It runs from noon to dusk. We will have free desserts from a churro food truck and a cupcake food truck, and then we will also have pizzas. We have Santa as usual. We'll have lots of crafts and activities. This year, we're going to have what have been dubbed "Manger Animals," whatever you determine that to be, and the usual festivities. And so I'm looking forward to it, and I hope all y'all are as well. Thank you.
And one more comment on that is that the Rayfeo is going to be here taking pictures as well. It's not often that you get to run into the Rayfeo, and you can probably have one of those one-in-a-million pictures of Santa Claus and Rayfeo at the same time. Which brings us to item 5.2, recognition, Chavano Park Police Department. Chief, I'm going to ask you to come forward, and I've got a couple of certificates right here for a couple of our citizens. And Chief, I'd like for you to tell what has happened, and then I'm going to stand up and join you, and we're going to hand out the certificates.
Okay, sir. I can cover it, and then we can call them up.
Okay.
Council mayor, members of the audience, tonight, we're going to recognize two citizens and two of the police department staff who were involved in the one burglary that we had and the work that they did on that. On October 11th, at about 2:30 in the afternoon on Wagon Trail Road, Mr. Raymond Tellez made contact with a stranger that was in the neighborhood there after noticing this young man had been parking suspiciously on Mr. Tellez's property. Believing that something wasn't right, he utilized his personal cellphone, and he snapped a very valuable photo of us, of the individual and of his car. Mr. Tellez's quick thinking proved very fruitful for us with those photographs in identifying this person and working on the case. Mr. Tellez then called his neighbor, Mr. Stingleman, and told him what was going on, the suspicious activity, and Mr. Stingleman decided to take some action, and he followed the young man in the car as he was driving around Chavano Park. Mr. Stingleman then decided to come to the police station, so he drove here and came inside and told us what was going on. And we deployed the officers at road duty at that time, plus all of us, and the station bailed out to go out there, and went to the house that they were seen at and had missed these individuals who were burglarizing the home on Wagon Trail by just a few minutes. However, we took the information that Mr. Tellez had given us, the photographs, and were able to develop that. Two of my staff are here tonight, Detective Stephanie Wade and Captain Mike Davis. They took the information. It was assigned to Detective Wade. They spent well over 100 hours, on top of their normal work hours, investigating the case, conducting surveillances at a townhouse over in San Antonio, making phone calls with one of the suspects, collecting the stolen property. And I'm happy to report that our end result after doing this is we have filed two cases on the two individuals for the crime. We've recovered almost all of the items, all the items we've been able to find that were either pawned or in a home or given to someone else, and we're able to get the majority of everything back for our homeowner. So we had a very successful case there. We were successful in finding the bad guys. We were doing a lot of things behind the scenes that we don't put out in release information. I had a few phone calls on that, and the reason we don't do that is we don't want the bad guys to read it, because we don't want them to know we know who they are. So from the actions that Mr. Tellez and Mr. Stingleman gave us, it really helped us out, so we would like to give them each a certificate of appreciation for their work. And then Detective Wade and Captain Davis will receive the chief's award of excellence for their work on this case. They could come forward.
Ramon, if you're here, and come on down, and David. Ramon, I got you up here first, and so I'm going to shake your hand. Thank you so very much for being a good neighbor. That is what this is about, is being a good neighbor. If you look at the camera. Thank you, sir. David, I want to thank you for following up on that.
Thank you.
That's going beyond the call of duty, is all we can say. So thank you for being a good neighbor for all these years, and we look forward to having you on board.
Thanks, sir.
Captain, Detective, if y'all come forward. The detective is new to our community, a little bit newer than our captain, and I've got to tell you how wonderful it is to have you in our community. We're excited about the work that you've been doing. We're excited about the work that you're going to be doing in the future. We like the way that you interact with our citizens. So please keep up your very, very good work.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. You know, you're where the dollar stops. The buck stops here sometimes, and we're excited to have you. And Chief Lacy told us that you were coming on board. We're all very excited to know that you would be a part of our city. So keep up the great work.
Thank you. Very much.
And Chief, I would be remiss if I did not mention the team leader. Leadership starts with you and our city manager, Bill Hill, and I'm very pleased, and I believe all of our citizens are very pleased with the direction of our police department. It was great to see you on TV the other night. You actually looked more handsome in person, but you had really great panache on TV the other day. So keep up the great work.
I'm not giving out any gowns.
No autographs this evening? Okay, no autographs this evening. Okay, that brings us to item 6.1, public hearing. Received comments from members of the public regarding proposed amendments to Chapter 36 of the City of Chavano Park Code of Ordinances to correct admissions of the A-1 PUD Huntington, A-2 PUD Bentley Manor, single-family residential planned unit development zoning districts, and CE PUD Willow Woods, CE PUD Bentley Manor Garden Villa North, and CE PUD Bentley Manors Garden Villa South, single-family cottage estates residential planned unit development zoning district that clarify setbacks and special exceptions. Bill, it is now 6:51, and we're going to begin the public hearing section of this meeting.
Thanks, Mayor. Just as an overview, let me just kind of say that these changes are, for the most part, completely administrative. Most of these changes were reflecting PUDs, Planned Unit Developments, that were approved previously, but then never made it into our Code of Ordinances. And then the other exception is the special exception. But let me just kind of go through this here. In consultation with the city attorney, these PUDs, when they're approved separately, a lot of times, they then come with a complete set of zoning regulations. Our practice has been that we list the exceptions to the base zoning document in the PUD, and that typically is not always then captured in the Code of Ordinances. So, for example, where I'm getting back in setbacks is that you can't find in the Code of Ordinances the setbacks as they are currently regulated in the PUD because they're not listed in a commonplace. So to eliminate confusion, we researched and gathered all the PUDs authorizing zoning documents, and we added the PUD zoning specifics to the tables of Article 6 of Chapter 36 zoning. And the track changes in your packet account for that in terms of the tables. In special exceptions, when we originally passed the special exceptions, we included all the basic zoning districts that were in there, and then we've gone through an iteration where, well, you didn't include A-1 PUD and A-2 PUD. And so, just to clarify that, the proposed language in here, just to get to the bottom of this, would include language that says special exceptions apply to all zoning districts where that's covered. So, again, if you want to go into any more detail, I can. The track changes are in there. I think it's pretty simple, and I'll pause for questions, or we can move forward with the action.
Okay, do we have any questions from the citizens? Do they have any comments that they'd like to address to Bill before we close the public hearing portion of this meeting? Okay, there being no citizens to be heard, it is now 6:54, and we're going to close the public hearing portion of the meeting. Item 6.2, discussion action ordinance O2017-022, amendments to Chapter 36 of the City of Chavano Park Code of Ordinances to correct admissions of the residential planned unit development zoning districts that clarify setback and special exceptions. This is an administrative ordinance which will be approved in one reading, if approved. Bill, do you have anything else that you would like to add?
None at this time.
Okay. I believe that this is something that we previously addressed for one other zoning district, and at the time that we considered it, there was not enough time to consider the other zoning items that are here this evening, and so this is just a follow-on for something that council acted on, I believe, about four months ago.
Yeah, council previously acted on authorizing special exceptions for the A-1 PUD.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance O2017-022?
So moved.
Michelle's made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mike Colmier has seconded the motion. We're now open for discussion. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. As I mentioned, this is an administrative ordinance and will become effective on publication. Item 6.3, discussion action ordinance O2017-021, amending the City Code of Ordinances Section 14-6, signs to comply with Texas Governmental Code Section 216.9003, regulation of political signs by municipality. Is Sean here? Sean? This is something that we approved on our first reading last month, that there was some amount of confusion. Planning and zoning had made written recommendation, and we went with a different recommendation that came forward at the night of the meeting. And so I have asked Bill and Sean to be presenters to discuss the issue, and then we will bring it back for discussion and action by city council. Bill, do you have anything that you'd like to begin with?
I would just say that there were two options presented to Planning and Zoning Commission. There was two options presented to city council. Planning and zoning commission voted to approve a recommendation authorizing signs to be regulated by option one. If you could pull that one up, Curtis. I think that's option two. Option one basically said that all signs described in the aggregate may be no more than 36 square feet in one given time. Okay? Basically, on any one property, you could have a 36-square-foot sign, and that's all you could have, or you could have a couple of different signs that add up to that. Option two, basically, which was recommended by the attorney but considered in the Planning and Zoning Commission, basically kept the ordinance as it was and then put a disclaimer in there that said all signs described in Sections 24, 6 shall be regulated as prescribed unless otherwise stated herein and otherwise specifically authorized by state law, which state law basically says political signs cannot be regulated if they're under 36 square feet. So I'll just, I just remind you that the commission voted on one, and then council last month voted on item two. And so I think I'm finished with that. That's all I have.
Sean, would you take a few minutes to give us an overview? And I thank you for coming this month. I know that you weren't available last month, and we appreciate you being here this month to give us your take. Sean, in my opinion, is a First Amendment expert. There aren't very many of those around the United States today, and we are very fortunate to have somebody with the esteemed qualifications that Sean has. Sean?
Perhaps more importantly, I'm on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we talked about this, and I wanted to explain a little bit about what we went through. I'm going to keep it as short as I can, but the ultimate conclusion's going to be that I don't think that this option two is in the best interest of the city. I'll explain why.
Could you speak in the mic? You've got to speak pretty close.
You have to be close to it.
Speak right into the mic.
I'm not sure how much closer I can get. Is this better?
Yes.
All right. So we have these two options. This is, option one is the one that we passed or that we recommended, where we, as Bill has already explained, we basically said that during the election season, you can have a sign that's up to 36 square feet. Option two is what you guys on first reading voted for at the last meeting, and we considered that too, and I'd like to go ahead and explain why we didn't select that one ourselves. So there were a lot of interests that we took into account. I mean, obviously, the city has an interest in keeping the city pretty, aesthetics, or else we wouldn't have a sign ordinance at all. We don't want signs that end up looking like that. That's what happens when you don't have a sign ordinance. And, by the way, I apologize for my, what do you call it? My art there. But, and by the way, all the slides here that look professional were done by Curtis, and all the ones that look a little bit irreverent are mine. But we didn't want anything like this, and of course, that's not really a concern here. We also had serious concerns about the First Amendment, and we wanted to maintain the constitutionality of the order- of the ordinance as best we could. And, of course, what isn't really reflected in what we recommended to you guys is that we wanted to get along here. We understand that there were competing and conflicting interests at stake. We know that MJ, and no one ever said a name or anything like that, but some candidates like to put up a big sign, and we wanted to accommodate that. So, the last thing that we considered as well was the Local Government Code, which we've already talked about, which essentially says that a city cannot enact an ordinance that regulates political signs on private property unless the signs are larger than 36 feet, square feet. We can have an ordinance that says you can't have signs that are larger than 36 square feet, more than eight feet high, lighted, or, you know, they have animated stuff on them. So, that state statute in itself doesn't do anything. It's inert, which would make you think that perhaps it's benign and can't cause any harm. But not so fast, because even something that is inert can be turned into something that's dangerous. And in this case, combining the state's law with our own ordinance that regulates the signs makes that state law dangerous. And so, here's the point, here's ultimately what I needed to get to. So, obviously, the city has an interest in not being sued. So, with the existing ordinance, without changing anything, can we be sued on that? Yeah, we can be sued for anything. And, you know, the other side's not necessarily going to win, but we can always be sued, and that's why the bottom color is yellow, and, well... And we have an orange, we have an orange with respect to the, that would be the option that we recommended, modified regulations during the voting period. That's the 36-square-foot provision that Planning and Zoning recommended. Now, the existing ordinance obviously has some problems with respect to the state law, the Local Government Code. It's pretty much fine under the First Amendment. That's, I mean, there are some issues with it, but they're not major issues. For instance, we allow signs that are specifically content-related to show, you know, that your kid is on the track team, or plays in the band, or something like that. That probably doesn't pass First Amendment muster because it's content-based, but I don't think anyone's really going to make an issue of those things. But it does conflict with the Local Government Code in that our existing ordinance doesn't make any provisions for political signs. Now, the next option is the option that you guys voted for during your last meeting, and that is basically the existing ordinance with an exception that says it doesn't apply if it conflicts with state law. Can we be sued on that? Yes, absolutely. Will we lose under the First Amendment? Yes, almost certainly. Does it comply with the Local Government Code? Yes, it does. But that doesn't save it. And then, of course, the bottom row, which is something that we also considered, but something that's really not in the interest of the city with respect to the aesthetic component of the sign ordinance, which is the reason why we have it in the first place, we can treat all signs like the Local Government Code allows municipalities to regulate political signs. In other words, we can say that you can have as many signs as you want, as big as you want, well, up to 36 feet, anytime you want them. Will we, does that pass First Amendment muster? Yes, it does. That's perfectly constitutional. And does it satisfy the Local Government Code? Yes, it does. But it doesn't satisfy the interest that we have in creating the sign ordinance in the first place. So, based on those things, we went ahead, and we recommended that we modify the regulations to accommodate those conflicting interests that we thought were most likely, and that were most relevant for, and specifically, we're talking about the large election signs that some of the candidates want to put up, thinking that that was the best trade-off between First Amendment concerns and Local Government Code concerns. I personally think that if there's a challenge to our ordinance for conflicting with the state law, that the city would probably prevail in that challenge, because the state law won't. You can't differentiate on expressive signs based on content, and the state law says that political signs have to be treated differently if they're going to be treated at all. So, on balance, that's what we chose. That's really all I wanted to present. I want to go back, though, and tell you why I don't think that Option 1 that you guys voted for really gets you where you...
Option 2.
Is this the one you guys voted for? Okay. So, if you look at the exception there that's recommended, it says that all signs described in this ordinance basically are regulated as prescribed unless otherwise stated, or unless otherwise specifically authorized by state law. And I don't think state law authorizes any signs. If, I mean, if you want to go with that, you probably need to say unless otherwise prohibited by state law, referring to the regulation that you have up there above. But nonetheless, if you have an ordinance like that that restricts you to six-foot, six-square-foot signs in your yard for your children's achievements, or for your for-sale signs and things like that, like our code provision does, but allows the larger political signs, it's not going to pass First Amendment scrutiny.
So, Sean, did you just tell us that neither Option 1 nor Option 2 pass First Amendment scrutiny?
Well, Option 1 doesn't pass First Amendment scrutiny for very benign reasons, and that is that we do actually differentiate on content for those, like scholastic achievement signs. That's content-based. That's probably not something that anyone's going to get worked up about. Option 2 is much more blatant in that it creates a completely different exception for political signs. For instance, you can have a 35.9-square-foot political sign posted anytime on private property under that exception that you have right there, not just during the voting season, but anytime.
Okay. So, you're not speaking to us as our attorney, certainly, because we haven't retained you as our attorney. But from a generic standpoint, as a First Amendment scholar, you're telling us that the second option should be ruled unconstitutional in your experience, in your practice, experience?
Yeah, I think if that, if our ordinance incorporates the state law in that manner, such that our ordinance treats political signs differently than it treats all other signs, then yes, I think that it's not going to pass First Amendment scrutiny.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification, and maybe Dan can work this. But when we originally passed the sign ordinance, and we put that point in there about the two signs, I'm going to read it exactly, because it doesn't, depending on your interpretation, it does not restrict it to achievement signs. We just use achievement signs as an example. You can put any sign you want there. And we wrote in encouragement of, you know, so let me read that. "In encouragement of the practice of recognizing achievements and student activities, each residential property may erect two signs that conform to the following requirements. Under these requirements, there is no requirement that it be student activities or student achievements. Signs cannot exceed four square feet in sign area, including framing, trimming, and molding. Signs may be placed within 10 feet of the front facing of the primary residence. Signs shall be no higher than four feet above grade, and the sign cannot be eliminated or backlit." So, in reality, you can put any sign you want, as long as it's four feet square and within 10 feet of the residence. To be, you know, to be affront, the attorney says, "Well, you know, you have this qualifier in there," which can be interpreted a certain way, but we don't enforce that, and we have not, we have not, you know, that was the intent. It's to encourage that, but we allow any sign to be there.
Okay. So that we can open this up for discussion from the council members, I'm going to entertain a motion concerning Ordinance O-2017-021. Do I have a motion to approve Ordinance O-2017-021?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Simpson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Bob Hanselman has seconded. We're now open for discussion.
Can we please have our city attorney weigh in again on the reasons that you support Number 2, unless you have a different opinion than Charlie? Thank you.
Well, so, while I was present at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and I don't disagree what's been stated regarding the First Amendment, this sign issues, going all the way back to where we first began writing this ordinance, our initial recommendation was that you don't differentiate between any of these signs by the type of message. But your ordinance evolved in a different fashion than other cities' ordinances that I was working on at the time, and this is where we came to. The idea behind Option 2 was what was to guard against challenges under the current state law. I agree that this Local Government Code provision regulating political signs would probably be ruled unconstitutional if someone were to challenge it. And, you know, our role is to not necessarily put you all out there as the test case, and so it's pick your poison in some fashion, whether it's a First Amendment challenge or a challenge under the Local Government Code. In the last election cycle, I believe the challenges were coming under state law, which had us take a closer look at how that was worded. But I don't disagree with what was stated tonight on those options. And at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, my statement to the commission was, "I'm fine with whichever option you go with, because either way, you still stand a chance of having a challenge brought against you," in my opinion. I was not here to hear what Charlie's statements were regarding Option 2 versus Option 1, so I can't speak to that if I'm disagreeing with him or not, but...
Okay. Michelle?
One other question was whether, my suggestion had been, why are we pushing this through at this point in time, and why don't we just sit back and wait to see what happens with the state law and the First Amendment, and then just leave it as it is? Does that open us up to more liability or not?
Well, I was hopeful they would do something this session, and they failed to do so. I really thought they would, given their loss, you know, with the Highway Beautification Act, but they didn't. Certainly, you can, whether it exposes you more or not, if you do not take any action, I really don't know. I mean, I just don't know.
Okay. Anybody else have questions, discussion points? Mike?
Well, I'm the one that's been pushing the, to bring those, our ordinance into conformity with the state statute, because we're a general law city, and that means that we have to do what the state statute says we have to do, and we can't do what the state statute says we can't do. And our ordinance is out of conformity with the state statute. And as of yet, there's been no challenge to the state statute. If there's a great concern about the constitutionality of this portion of the government code, then let's, on the council, then let's do the same thing that we did with the Open Meetings Act, that we found onerous with the campaign time. Let's petition our senator and our representative to bring the state law into conformity at the next meeting. But doing nothing is, I don't think, an option when we know that our ordinances do not conform to the requirements of the state law. So, I would be open to either of those solutions, but doing nothing, I don't think is, I'm not open to.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion? Mike?
But if state law is not constitutionally enforceable, how can we be held accountable under state law?
Well, anybody can sue over anything, and that was one of the red light, or the red tiles that Sean was telling us about. And Sean, would you step back up to the lectern, just in case people want to address their questions to you? And I think that Mike's question is more, is better addressed by you than the mayor commenting, so please, if you would, address his question.
Mr. Simpson has, he stated it accurately. I mean, we're in a catch-22. There are no good options here. Everything's going to open us up. I guess the way that we looked at it was, does it, you know, how deeply do we want to compromise what we thought the city's interests were in aesthetics, since we're basically given a choice of a bunch of bad options?
So, in your opinion, Option 1, as presented by P&amp;Z, is the best option?
That's a difficult question, because...
Well, or the better option of the two, as presented?
That's the best option, according to P&amp;Z. It wasn't a unanimous vote. It was not a unanimous vote, but that is, after the debate we had at P&amp;Z, what we consider to be the best option amongst all of the bad options that we have.
Okay. It wasn't a unanimous vote. What was your vote?
What was my vote? Oh, I'd leave it just how it is.
Leave the current ordinance how it is and take our chances.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Bob, do you want to weigh in?
I just, you know, I think both options, from what's been stated, have pitfalls. You're either not in compliance with state code, or you're at risk for being unconstitutional. And I think this panel, based on the advice and expertise that we got with the last two attorneys, and I think we've had different opinions, differential opinions from everybody we've talked to, essentially says that we need to be in compliance with the state code if we possibly can, but even then, we could possibly be at risk. I think universe, or unanimously, I should say, we, I believe, we voted unanimously at the last meeting to do Option Number 2. And I'm not sure I see any reason to change that at this point, although I very much respect, Sean, your opinion. I just think we're, as we've all stated, we're all in a pickle here, because there's no clear-cut answer, and one's not necessarily better than the other. So, I'm not really inclined to change what we already agreed that made sense for the city in lieu of what we're dealing with constitutionally and with state law.
Well, from the standpoint of constitutionality, I'm going to go with the First Amendment as opposed to the Texas Governmental Code. And I don't see that I could sign something that, somebody that I respect, his legal opinion as a First Amendment scholar, has said it's unconstitutional. I cannot imagine myself signing that, just out of principle.
However, he's saying that he wouldn't go with either one of them. He'd keep it the way it is, so...
Well, I mean, that was my personal preference.
Mine, too.
Right. So, it doesn't sound like he would like to sign either one of them.
Okay, so, just to make sure we're clear, Commissioner Jansen assigned that to Commissioner, Chairman Jansen to Commissioner Fitzpatrick. Given the task that we need to do something, Commissioner Fitzpatrick came up with Option 1. I could be wrong, and Zena might be able to tell me. I was just going to look. I think the vote was near unanimous with Commissioner Fitzpatrick voting against the one that he...
And Kerry Dyke.
Which, okay, maybe two, because they didn't think they should change it all. But our attorneys, and my assessment is, one of the two ought to be passed, because if you think we're vulnerable, if we pass one or two, we're two or three times more vulnerable if you leave it the way it is. And...
Okay.
So...
Michelle?
I asked you to research and provide information to us on what other cities have done as far as this ordinance, this issue.
Well, we did some of that before. I didn't prepare a specific analysis of city-by-city associated with this. I apologize if I missed that.
Because I think some are doing nothing.
Most of the cities, basically, okay, what we've done is we've chosen to regulate signage during political season as a separate thing, and we don't say that it has to be political signs. In the political season, you can put any sign up you want. You can put, you know, Joe's car mechanic, or, you know, housekeeping worker, you can do anything you want. We don't regulate it by content. You can put... don't regulate it by content. You can put, anybody can put any sign up whatsoever, under option two, to put it in practical purposes during political time. And you can debate, when is political time? And I can, you can make an argument that political time is almost continuously, if you have a political sign, that under option one, you can have no more than 36 square feet. Under option two, you could have 10 36 square foot signs in your property. And that's the practical matter of that. What Alderman Simpson says is correct. We are a general law city. We have to follow that. And, you know, I'm just summarizing again for the commission, given the choices of doing nothing, option one or option two, it seemed to the commission that option one was the best. And I'm not going to, if I misspeak, part of the dissenting vote was, we should do nothing, because anyone that sues will lose. And so therefore, they would never sue, and we should stand the ground and keep our signs at 24 square feet, no greater than. Okay? And so, again, just to repeat what Commissioner Fitzpatrick says, we try to accommodate it, because we know that the average large political sign is an eight by four, which is 32 square feet. So you could put an eight by four square foot, and you could have a couple other accessory signs, and you would still be in compliance. So option one basically takes care of 99% of the possibilities that have ever existed in Chauvin Oak Park. So that's, you know, that's kind of why they kind of went there, because neither one is completely clean, but either is leaving it like it is.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions, comments? Okay, if there are no more discussion. Sean, I want to thank you very much. I do appreciate you coming out this evening.
Sure. My pleasure.
Okay. We have a motion seconded by, made by Mike Simpson and seconded by Bob Hanselman to approve ordinance O 2017 021. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. The ordinance fails. Bill, can we consider the second, can we consider the second alternative of?
The second one is part of the first one. The motion was to approve option.
Number two.
Two.
And that has failed. Okay. Do I have a motion to revise ordinance O 2017 021 to be option one? Okay. We're now to item 6.4, drainage. Bill?
Okay. In your packets, the drainage study, what you're going to get is a presentation from KFW Engineers, Chris Otto, who is basically going to, his presentation mirrors the study. The study's in a Word document that provides a summary of 12 drainage areas with some proposed cost. And then you'll kind of see the way ahead. I'm going to turn it over to Chris here in a second. I will just tell you that he has presented the results to the Planning and Zoning Commission twice. And now the report has been finalized, and we've received some feedback from citizens based upon that. And now you've got the final report in your packet plus a presentation. Chris?
Good evening. I am Chris Otto with KFW Engineers. I am the Director of Infrastructure Services for KFW, and the Project Manager on the Drainage Master Plan that we recently completed. Quick rundown, just give you an overview of what we did. We've set up a GIS service to host data for Chauvin Oak Park, including the Drainage Master Plan, shape files, watersheds, proposed solutions, just in a map that's live. And we'll go over the deliverables and the different areas that we studied. You know, to start, we did, we did review the historic drainage reports that were done. We kind of used those as a baseline to start with, identifying the more critical areas that have been talked about since, you know, the 80s. In the past studies, I don't know that a lot of analysis went into those. It was more of a, this is the area that has a problem. We need to do something here. What we did is we actually did an analysis for all of the, I think it's 13 different study areas. We ran a two dimensional hydraulic analysis, our hydraulic and hydrology analysis on all of those. And then, of course, we plugged everything into a GIS database. So it's easy for staff to pull up on any computer, even their smartphone, and be able to review data while they're in the field. In fact, can you switch me over, Curtis, to the GIS site? So this is the GIS web service that we're hosting for Chauvin Oak. On here, this is really cluttered right now. Turn down. So these kind of greenish blue lines that just sort of disappeared on us, those are drainage area boundaries. Anything within one of those boundaries would drain to the outfall. The blue lines represent proposed projects. And then the multicolored hatching, this is probably the most recognizable right now, represents the depth of flooding that would be expected on a 25-year design storm event. 25-year design storm event is defined as seven and a half inches of rainfall in a 24-hour period. We also analyzed the 100-year storm event, which is 10 inches in a 24-hour period. And we have those results on here as well. So let me turn off the 25. This is the 100. Maybe. There we go. I will note that throughout most of the city, the difference between the 25-year and the 100-year were not substantial. They were very similar results. Most of the drainage areas that we're dealing with are less than 100 acres. And we kind of followed City of San Antonio guidelines. If you're less than 100 acres of drainage area, you design for a 25-year storm event. If you're greater than 100 acres, you design for 100-year. And so we focused heavily on the 25-year storm, just because of the drainage areas that we were working with. And in addition to hosting the drainage information on this web service, we also recently went out and located all of the fire hydrants throughout the city, or all of the Chauvin Oak owned fire hydrants. We located those with GPS, and those are also hosted on this service. So, back to the presentation. Chris, can you hit a five? All right. So the study provides the following for the city. List of stormwater runoff problems with descriptions of each problem area. Of course, the GIS shape files we just talked about. We are hosting those on the web service. We're also going to provide a DVD with that data, so that if the city should get ArcGIS or similar software, y'all be able to run it on your own computers. With that, we created a watershed map using the 2010 LiDAR data. It's basically aerial topography that was flown. San Antonio River Authority has that available, so that's what we used. Using that, we did develop 25- and 100-year peak flow rates for all of the watersheds. Chauvin Oak Park is basically built out. There's not a lot of land left to develop. So we basically, we considered ultimate conditions on everything. We assumed every property had something built on it. For the larger projects, we do provide lower cost alternatives. We call them the minimum recommended options. And then, at the end, we do have a prioritized list that we developed based on several factors, including staff input, citizen input, planning and zoning input. So one important thing to note is that this is a citywide flood study. It's impossible for us to get into, you know, the fine details within a reasonable budget. So we have to make some assumptions, the largest of which is using 2010 LiDAR. Chauvin Oak Park does have a lot of trees. Tree cover affects LiDAR. We did not collect any field data, survey data with this. And so with the LiDAR, you know, there is some potential for error in there. The primary intent here is to provide an order of magnitude for each one of these areas. Once you get into detailed analysis, there may be better alternatives that we didn't identify, based on site conditions, you know, home placement, fences, utilities. So for each of these, we do recommend that a detailed analysis be conducted prior to formally funding a project for construction, or design and construction. And again, because of our assumptions and LiDAR, it is possible that some of these areas, the flooding that we modeled is exaggerated from reality or what citizens have witnessed over the years. So Drainage Area 1 is the natural basin between Wagon Trail and Wellesley Landing, just south of Huntington. It's just a low spot. It's basically a giant swimming pool that holds water after flood events. The water does get close to the homes, as shown here. The homes on Wagon Trail, I mean, that's a 25-year storm. It does get rather close. The 100-year gets a little bit closer. Our model indicates the homes don't actually flood, but it does get close. And it does hold water for an extended period of time, requiring constant mosquito treatment. So the proposed solution that we came up with was to put in a 2,300-gallon per minute pump with 750 feet of 12-inch force main to drain the pond over a 24-hour period. So the pump, you know, would kick on at certain elevation. It would reduce the extent of flooding a little bit. But the main purpose of this is to drain that pool in a reasonable time period, 24 hours. We do estimate the cost on that to be $25,000 to $50,000. There has been some discussion that the developer of Huntington would contribute to that, or at least the city has requested that he contribute to that. And this just shows, you know, we'd put the pump in the center. I believe there's actually a wet well already there. It just needs a pump and electricity. But a 2,300-gallon per minute pump is rather large, hence the cost.
Question. You're going to take the water out into the Almous Basin. There's a break in here, and I don't know which lot it happens where the water goes to the Salado Creek. We've already evaluated that, and we can move all this water into the Almous Basin?
Yes, we did. So there is that, the channel that runs parallel to Wagon Trail on the north side of the homes. We did analyze adding 2,300 gallons per minute into that channel, and it has capacity, as does the downstream infrastructure. 2,300 gallons per minute in the pump world is a lot of water. In the drainage world, it's not very much at all. So that channel has no problem conveying that. Area 2 is the open channel that drains from Kenan Way that we just discussed to Northwest Military near Cullen Circle. I just told you that channel had no problem conveying that flow. Wasn't exactly right. So the channel, there's a 90-degree bend in the channel as it comes south, and then it kind of turns to the northwest, right about here. Water, according to our model, actually spills out of that channel bank and flows between the homes, and ultimately towards this culvert on Northwest Military. And so the recommended solution here is to put in a 200-foot-long berm. You know, it'd only be two or three feet high. We estimate the cost would be $25,000 on that. And then that would prevent the spill from occurring. The yellow on here, and I apologize, on our web service, we use blue. On these exhibits, I use yellow. So they're the same thing. So this is that discharge pipe coming up. It would discharge here. And then this is that berm that we recommend constructing. And that would prevent the spill from occurring. And then beyond that, the channel does have capacity, as does the culvert on Northwest Military. Drainage Area 3 is basically the Turkey Creek area. There's a natural low that runs through the subdivision. It doesn't have capacity for design flow. And then also, there's a culvert on the text on Northwest Military that creates a backwater, which backs up into the homes north of Northwest Military. So actually, there's two culverts. So this culvert, there's a culvert over here. It backs up, and then it just kind of spills through the neighborhood. And then this one, they combine, and it just flows through. You can see there's several homes impacted. There's multiple roads. And then once you get down here, the natural low actually has capacity without impacting homes. Because of the path of that natural low, you know, between the homes, we're kind of forced to do a little bit of an odd system here, where what we're recommending is, at the northern culvert, we would collect that water and take it down Northwest Military, and then go between these homes, and then go into the streets, and then between these homes, and into the natural low, which discharges into Almous Basin. The reason, the reason we're recommending this is because with this low, we don't want to have to go between more houses than we have to. And so if we can take it down Northwest Military, you know, we can take it all to one point and get it out. Because we're recommending improvements in the Northwest Military right away, we have requested that Tech Dot build that segment that's circled in blue. We've asked them to build that as part of their operational improvements. To my knowledge, they have not agreed to that yet, but they're at least considering it. When they do that, what they'll have to do is, actually, they'll build it and then block it off, so it doesn't take any flow. The reason for that is, you don't want to divert water from here down to here and make this flooding problem worse. So in the end term, we would build it. We would let this water continue to do what it's doing today. And then ultimately, when this system gets built, then you can connect it and you fix everybody's problem. The estimated cost on that is $5.4 million.
How much of that is Tech Dot's? Hopefully?
I did not break down the Tech Dot portion. I'm just going to swag it. It probably 100,000 of that would be that Tech Dot portion, maybe 150. And the other benefit, if Tech Dot will build us, is they're already redoing the pavement. So it makes sense for them to do it now. And that's kind of the angle that we're playing with them, is, you know, this needs to be done. If y'all do it now, we won't have to come back and tear up your pavement in three years, five years, whatever it may be. So I'm leaning on them kind of hard to try and make this happen. So 5.4 million dollars, that's a little hard to swallow. And so the minimum recommended solution would be to construct culvert crossings on Honeybee Lane, Turkey Creek Road, and Longbow Road. We estimate those at about $170,000 apiece. Still decent chunk of money. But what that would allow, so that's basically building a culvert crossing here, here, and here. And that would allow people to be able to ingress and egress without having to drive through a low-water crossing. So that's Area 3. Area 4 is Elm Spring Lane. I'm sure everyone's familiar with Elm Spring. You know, the road basically is the creek. It floods on a regular basis. There are homes that are impacted. So again, the culvert crossing at Tech Dot needs to be improved. We've asked Tech Dot to construct that improvement. And then we would connect to that and do an underground storm system all the way down Elm Spring, and then discharge between the homes into the natural low, and ultimately into Almous Creek. Cost estimate on that is 2.15 million. Another option that we did consider, at the request of several residents, is Another option that we did consider at the request of several residents is to construct a detention basin on the Bear 911 property located on Northwest Military. It's currently vacant. We did analyze that option. The end result was a minimal benefit to Elm Spring Lane. Therefore, we haven't, we haven't recommended that solution. There may be some more localized benefits to that, but we'd have to do detailed survey to know for certain if that provides any real benefit. And then, on this one, the minimum recommended solution is roughly 140,000 would be to do a culvert on, I believe that's Bike Way, and then do some channel improvements between the homes to get the water into Almous Creek. That would at least, you know, improve the crossing here to provide ingress egress. Area 4-2 is the municipal tract and Ripple Creek. In our analysis, we found that water comes through the southern portion of the municipal tract, and then when it hits Dezavala, water kind of backs up a little bit, and then some of it would spill through the houses and into Almous Creek, and the remainder would go down Ripple Creek. So, what we, what we recommend here is doing a detention basin on the municipal tract that wasn't popular with the residents at the public hearing. Alternatively, it could just be building a berm through here to prevent water from going through the homes and then doing channel improvements along Ripple Creek Drive and a culvert crossing here to allow water to go underneath the road. Estimated cost on that is $735,000. The residents have indicated that flooding is not as severe as the models indicate. Again, there's a lot of tree cover. LiDAR may not be totally accurate. So, this is one of the areas where we do recommend that additional analysis be done.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I live, live on Ripple Creek, and I was there for the 88 and the 92, or correction, 92 or 98 and 2002, and had no problem. I mean, this...
And that's what we've heard from other residents in the area as well. Like I said, some of our assumptions may have been overly conservative. LiDAR could be bad. You know, my recommendation would be, you know, if y'all feel that it is a concern, then we go out, we do some field survey, and we reanalyze it using on-the-ground topo. Or if y'all feel that it's not really a concern, then there's nothing to do.
Continue.
Okay. Area five is Windmill Road, Bent Oak Drive, Cliffside Drive, and West Mil, or Northwest Military. We combined these into area five because they're all in the same tributary. Windmill Road and Bent Oak do not have culvert crossings, which means all stormwater goes over the road. Cliffside Drive has a 48-inch pipe that does not have adequate capacity, so our models indicate that it'll overtop probably on a fairly regular basis. And then Northwest Military is also undersized. At Windmill Road, the proposed solution is three 5-foot-by-4-foot multi-box culverts at an estimated cost of 235,000. Bent Oak, it would be four 5-by-5 multi-box culverts at an estimated cost of 263,000. Cliffside Drive, we'd recommend removing the 48-inch pipe and putting in five 6-foot-by-5-foot multi-box culverts at an estimated cost of 312,000. And I should mention, when the estimated cost, that includes engineering fees, survey, contingencies, you know, miscellaneous construction items that we may not have thought of. So, these numbers may be inflated a little bit based on all of that. Northwest Military, there's one 8-by-7 box culvert currently. We're proposing adding two more. Estimated cost on that is $229,000 for the culvert only. We did not include pavement in that analysis or in that cost because, again, we've asked Text Dot to improve that as part of their operational improvements. And I only, I only did the cost estimate really to identify what the additional cost to Text Dot might be. And then also, when I was doing my site visit out on Bent Oak in particular, I noticed a lot of downed, dead vegetation laying on the ground. That vegetation during a major storm can flow downstream and block culverts, which just makes the flooding worse. And so, we do recommend going through and removing that debris. We estimate the cost on that to be about $15,000 just to get out there with a chipper and, you know, maybe a Bobcat just to clean it up. And this is a little hard to see on the screen, but you got Windmill. I just drew a blank. Bent Oak, Cliffside, and Northwest Military. Area six is a natural low along Happy Trail. Our model indicates the street does not have capacity as well as the ditch that it drains Excuse me. So, our recommendate, recommended solution is to actually collect the water at this intersection and then pipe it to the natural low and then do some channel improvements through here to get that water through without impacting any homes. The estimated cost on that is $617,000. Again, we've had some residents indicate that flooding is not as severe as the models indicate. I've had one resident that says, yeah, that's about right. So, you know, maybe additional analysis is warranted on this one as well with some field survey data. But this just shows where we'd put the storm source system and then do a channel. At a minimum, I'd recommend doing the channel. Earthwork is fairly inexpensive, and it would allow the water to just get off the road a little bit faster to make a safer, safer driving condition during storm events. Area seven, there's two additional lows on Happy Trail near Bobcat Bend and Rock Squirrel. They're kind of the same situation as the previous. You know, water backs up on the road, impacts homes as it drains through the creek on both of them. At Bobcat Bend, you'd be construct 250 feet of earthen channel between the homes. Estimated cost about 60,000. And at Rock Squirrel, it's got a little bit more drainage area, a little bit longer length, so 300 feet at about $82,000. Again, residents in the area have indicated that these models appear to be conservative, and they have not seen this level of flooding. So, we'd recommend additional analysis using field survey. And that just shows the 250-foot channel and 300-foot channel. Drainage area eight, or area eight, is the natural low south of Cinnamon Creek and Post Oak Way. Our initial model indicated flooding in the area. City staff and residents have indicated that that's never happened. So, we did some further analysis and determined that, you know, all is well in the world. So, there are actually no improvements recommended for area eight. Area nine and 10 are the Bentley Manor area is nine. Area 10 is Chavino Commons area, which is actually primarily City of San Antonio. We identified no problems within the City of Chavino Park in these two areas. They're both newer areas that, you know, took into account drainage, and so they're, they're good to go. Area 11 is a culvert crossing between Wagon Trail and Longboat on Northwest Military. Our model indicated that the culvert itself actually has capacity to convey the water without overtopping the road, which Text Dot would consider a win. However, it appears that that culvert creates a backwater condition that impacts the driveway and this home. And so, we've recommended to Text Dot that they improve that culvert crossing by lowering the invert of it, you know, dropping the elevation so that the backwater doesn't extend as far upstream. We estimate the cost on that to be about $90,000 for the culvert alone. Again, we didn't include road pavement because it's part of the Text Dot job. That just indicates what the cost to Text Dot would be to do that improvement. And then, area 12 is Fawn Drive and Chimney Rock Lane. Chimney Rock becomes impassable. It's been closed on numerous occasions because of the depth of water. Fawn Drive also does not have a culvert and becomes potentially hazardous. That's chimney, no, I'm sorry. This is Chimney Rock. That's Fawn Drive. So, the recommended solution on both of them, well, is to put in a culvert. At Fawn Drive, we're looking at a single 7-foot-by-4-foot culvert at a cost of about 131,000. And then Chimney Rock, it would be a 10-foot-by-6-foot box culvert at a cost of roughly 165,000. So, based on everything we went through, you know, we've, we've met with staff, we've met with residents, planning and zoning. We, we came up with a priority list of projects. The Wagon Trail Depression, you know, we've got number one. The Kenan Way Channel Berm, we got second. Bent Oak Clearing 3, you know, those are the least expensive. They're easy to knock out. And then, we get into the big boys. Turkey Creek area, area three, $5.4 million, and then Elm Springs right behind it. We put those higher in the list because there are more homes impacted, and there's potential for Text Dot participation in the project. That's why we did rank those higher. Chimney Rock is next on the list. You know, we ranked that one there because it does become impassable and has to be closed numerous times. And then, we just go through the list. And then, the projects where, you know, the residents have indicated our model was conservative, those are at the very bottom of the list, indicating that, you know, potentially no improvements need to be done. What I'd actually recommend on some of these, like, when it comes time to, to do Turkey Creek or something, go ahead and include some of these other areas for additional analysis. While you got the survey crew out there, you just hit a couple of other areas, get the information you need, and just kind of roll that into the, another project. So, you're not allocating, you know, special dollars just for that. You tie it into something else. It makes it easier. So, implementing these projects, you know, obviously, you need to identify potential funding sources, city reserves, bonding, grants. There are state and federal grants available. Again, prior to doing detailed design on any of these, we do recommend additional analysis using field survey to determine the appropriateness of the recommended solution and identify potential alternatives. Particularly when we start getting into storm sewers, there's potential for utility conflicts with water. I think in Chavino, water's probably the, the biggest conflict. All the electric and everything else is overhead, and everyone's on septic in the areas of concern. You know, there are going to be some right-of-way or easement acquisition required. You know, we'd recommend doing detailed analysis and determining exactly where that's needed and how much is needed before pursuing that. And then, because Chavino doesn't have any specifics drainage requirements, most small towns utilize City of San Antonio around here. You know, either they just reference San Antonio directly, or they adopt their own ordinance, which is a copy and paste of San Antonio. So, I just recommend, you know, we use San Antonio. All the engineers around here know it. And so, that's, that's what I recommend on that. And then, any questions?
Okay. We're going to open up for discussion. Bill, do you want to say anything before we turn it over to the council members?
Well, obviously, yeah. I think Chris just signed and put his seal on this last week.
Yes.
And staff has been working in coordination with him, and so, the next step for us is to develop that action plan, which may be phased. Phase one, taking existing funds that we have. And, you know, I'll just kind of say, I don't have a detailed plan yet, but, you know, tackling priority one, two, three, six, you know, seven, eight, nine, 10, you know, those, even 11, may be already within our funding capability, and we show action and real results. I mean, if, if you just remove area one, that water, that Wagon Trail Depression, that's a huge victory. That, that, that water sits there from basically all summer and just is infested with mosquitoes, and we get constant complaints. And, and just two, I happen to know, like, this Kenan Way Channel Berm where it overflows, it absolutely affects those properties that crosses from that area in, on both sides of wagon wheel, wagon trail, and then eventually comes back around up to Northwest Military Highway. So, you know, if we can make those work, that's easy. I, my initial analysis says Kenyan Way is, that channel can be done in coordination with the Homeowners Association in Huntington, which I can't imagine they would, you know, it wouldn't affect them per se. It would, it would, it would be assisting everyone else, but we'll have to work through that. The Wagon Trail Depression is on private property, and I, I will stop it there only in that we would have to coordinate that. And so, there's a number of these options that, before we actually decide we're going to tackle these first, there needs to be some coordination with the individual owners because, you know, we may very well say we're going to go gain right-of-way or easement associated with that, but that's a big step. It has to be a very deliberate action and thought process. So, again, my initial thought is, take a look at the quick wins with the money that we have. These big-ticket items need to be considered very carefully, and, you know, I'm, I will then bring up options for the council in terms of how you want to approach that and the timeline associated with that, and I intend to do that within the next couple of months.
Okay. Do we have any council comments, questions? Mike Simpson?
When will we know what Text Dot is willing to do? Is it the 30% or 80% or final design? When would we look forward to having their decisions?
With Text Dot, that's hard to say. We have been having monthly meetings with them, and we do bring it up every time. I will tell you that at the first meeting, they said, "We're not doing drainage. We're the highway department. We do highways. We don't do drainage." At the next meeting, they said, "Okay, we're not going to make the drainage worse." The meeting following that, they said, "Okay, well, maybe we can do something here." So, we're, we're progressing in a positive direction with Text Dot. Where are they at on their design? They...
30%? They're almost, by the end of the year, they should be at 30%, and then they'll move towards it. And I think that the answer that you're looking at is 60%. I will tell you that having this, this study done and having KFW at the room has made them accountable, and they've brought their drainage experts in. In fact, their consultant team now includes a team of, includes drainage folks. And when your consultant is telling Text Dot that you got to do this because the, you know, because the scientific piece of this supports it, then they have to address it.
Yeah, they have a hard time arguing with numbers.
Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Bob?
Is there one quick question? That, the one piece on Elm Creek that a couple of residents brought up, the Bear 911 piece that you talked about, what was the reason that you couldn't, that it wasn't feasible?
It's feasible. It's just the, the benefit to, to Elm Spring was minimal. When we ran it, the, the floodplain didn't change hardly at all. There, there was a minor benefit. This one. There was a minor benefit in this piece right here, but further down Elm Spring, it, it just didn't have a benefit. And we, you know, in doing this citywide study, we focused more on the regional, you know, we, we weren't focused on localized flooding. We look, you know, trying to look at the bigger picture.
The, the other thing is, of course, we haven't even talked, we don't own the land. We haven't even talked to Bear 911. We haven't even made a mention of that. But I'll just be a little more candid. In our discussion with Chris and his team, he's got a team of people working on this. Let me see the pointer. The flooding that occurs in these homes here really comes because there's an overflow here, and... here. And the, the water kind of comes this way before it goes that way. And so putting a detention pond here, again, is minimal impact if any.
And actually, I just, I wasn't even looking on the left side of this.
... pistol to that area anyway, right?
Yeah. So by putting something in here that channels it down here, you know, you're going to, you're not going to, you're not going to carry all of that, you know. There's some of that is just lower, it's just low area there.
Well, I forgot that I had it on the left-hand side of the slide, but that, that actually is what it would look like with a detention pond. So that red block right there is the detention pond. And then you can see, you know, there's still flooding that occurs. And if you compare that to this, you know, like I said, there's benefit across those first two houses, but beyond that, it looks the same.
Okay. Anybody else have a question, comment? Very good. Chris, thank you very much. We appreciate everything that KFW does for the community and we look forward to our next briefing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, which brings us to item six point five, discussion action proposal to upgrade the audio visual infrastructure of the city hall council chambers to support the implementation of a public ass, access channel. Bill?
I'm going to start it off. If I could ask Curtis to come up here and I'm going to let him give the specifics. Just to remind everybody, July twenty-fourth, at the two thousand seventeen city council meeting, we approved by resolution the city's communication strategy. And that strategy included the city building for an eventual implementation of a public access channel. Subsequent to that, in the seventeen eighteen budget council approved thirty-six thousand dollars of PEG funds to upgrade the audio visual infrastructure of city hall chambers to support the implementation of the public access channel. We received, we put out a bid, we've seen multiple, well, before that, I'll just say, we've received, as you know, lots of complaints on various items and Curtis can address that separately. We submitted the bids, we tried to get it prepared for the last committee, meeting. Didn't have it quite tight, so I think we're, we're in a much better place. And at this point in time, the specifics of that, both the, the actual improvements as well as the bids and the costs associated with that, I'm going to let Curtis present.
Evening, Mayor Council. I'll be quick. So we received four bids, Electrolink, Javi, Multimedia Specialities, and SA Sound and Light. Three of the four companies followed the correct format. Javi did not provide the base package plus the options as specified. You can see their bid amounts there. So narrowing it down to Multimedia Specialties and SA Sound and Light were both very near our, our budget we had. So I really dig down and analyze them further. I'm recommending we go with Multimedia Specialties. They offer very similar solution, capabilities. They will solve the basic problems. But for a lower price, we're getting more display monitors up in the DIES and we have a, a better projector, at least much more lumens, which will be better illuminated, I think, give a better viewing experience for everybody here. So again, this project will provide a get dedicated recorder. That's going to significantly increase the quality, visual quality of our recordings. We'll have twelve wired mics. It's going to be much, that'll mean all nine members of P and Z can be wired up. They don't have to share. For our workshops, you can be up here. It will be much easier to, they won't, to unplug all six of those mics. We'll have a basic box with twelve inputs. I run one master cable out. I set up all twelve mics, that's six council, that's six staff for a workshop and a budget. All, all the directors and, you know, the city manager all have dedicated mics. Everybody can hear in the recording and in the audience. The podium mic quality, all three, three of the four companies said, this is a good microphone. It's fine. It's the stereo equipment and it's your audio cabinet. We need, if we fix those, this will be proved. We don't have to, we don't have to replace the microphone, we don't have to replace this podium. The stereo setup, all these JBLs will be replaced. They, and there'll be new stereos will have, as you can see, though, that's a for ten, for ten for Multimedia Specialties, ten for speakers. So I'm not, I trusted the companies with it. This is a challenging room, from what I understood, for, for ringing out for audio. Should be significantly improved stereo here. The mixers, amps and receivers, there's power switches, can power controls, digital mixers, amplifiers. I trust all these companies that they have the equipment they need to run what we're mainly concerned with, the experience of the user here sitting and watching from home. The projector upgraded, so we'll get a new projector. It will be major in, a visual in, experience upgrade for everybody here. We'll have a dedicated screen. We're going to be upgrading lumens. We're going to jump forward twenty years of technology. That'll be a huge upgrade. Projector screen, so there'll be an actual matte fixed frame back there. It'll be a better. And the display monitors, again, they, that's eight monitors, twelve inch up there, so that what you're viewing, you don't have to turn around like in the drainage study. It could be right there in front of you. And with eight, you don't have to share. And even a P and Z, maybe we can fit in nine. We'll go to nine, but a P and Z, only two members would have to share. And with their, with Multimedia Specialties bid price at thirty-four thousand, we do have it, with a thirty-six thousand budget, we can include one of the options. And so I recommend that we would take the boom shotgun microphones. And that would allow for town hall setups, you would have two more powerful mics that are better set up to gathering audience input. So my recommendation is we award Multimedia Specialties and we'll get them in here and we'll get this fixed up. We'll mention real quick, this is not ADA, this is not ADA compliance. I think that's a little bit outside the scope of PEG funds. I think this will significantly improve the visual and audio experience for people sitting here and at home, and will solve many of the problems. But if you, if we want to go the, there, I've looked at city halls, when I was dealing with these companies in different Leon Valley and other cities that had setups to address eighty, ADA compliance, those systems are about five thousand dollars that I got a quote on one of them. So.
Curtis, this is a very, very hot room. Does the noun noise cancellation technology help at all with the fact that it's a hot room or not?
The noise cancellation option on here, is that what you're referring to? Yeah, that would solve any, any worries about during an executive session.
Well, I meant, when we're out here, can you add noise cancellation in here and make this room less hot? You know, it dampens, it dampens all of the background noise and it just lets you have the one, the one source, the, the sources that you're giving people. Does, would it help?
I didn't ask the company specifically for noise cancellation here in the room, just in the back council chamber. Just observing, we do have sound panels that are meant to deafen some of that sound.
And you should have been here twenty years ago when we didn't.
But when they, when they, I don't believe those are too expensive. And while they're setting up their, their, the new speakers, we have completely new arrangement of hearing speakers. Maybe we need to add more panels. I, I don't know. I'll, I'll trust the companies with that.
Anything else? Bill, anything before we open it up for?
No, I guess, the only thing I'd say is, you know, our recommendation, just like Curtis said, is, is the base option plus the boom shotgun mic, which should be right under budget.
Okay. I believe that what you're recommending is that we approve the bid for Multimedia Specialties. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion on item six point four to?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the project for Multimedia Specialties to upgrade the audio visual infrastructure of city hall council chambers up to the thirty-six thousand dollar budgeted amount.
To support the implementation of our public access channel. Correct?
Well, that's the topic of the discussion.
Yes, sir. Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Bob Hinesman, the second of the motion. Do we have any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We're now at six point six. Discussion actions support the Rayfeo and potential Fiesta activities by the city of Chavano Park. Bill?
Briefly, our, one of our residents, Ken Flores, from Chavano Park, is been designated the two thousand eighteen Fiesta Rayfeo. He's the third one from Chavano Park in recent history, starting in nineteen eighty-four, two thousand two, and now two thousand seventeen. Earlier this month, he asked for a meeting with the mayor and I, which we met with him, and he discussed having a Chavano Park Fiesta event. What he proposed initially was a five K run. And then he talked about doing it on several possible days, the seventh, the fourteenth, or the twenty-first. Again, I, I only will tell you, my point was, we've already got an Arbor Day, Earth Day scheduled the twenty-first. If you're going to do that, then do it on the same day so that you have some synergy you can tie from one event to the next. The bottom line is, he was going to go look at his calendar. He looked at his calendar since then. He says, I can't support the five K race and, but I do want to participate in your Arbor Day, Earth Day event. We don't know what that means. I do believe that he has intended to be here and he's scheduled to be here for the Christmas Day event. So this, this topic became a little bit easier, even as we were writing the council packet. But there's still a couple elements. The, the five K race was also an idea, and it was proposed that we consider doing that during the Arbor Day Earth Day, even before the Rayfeo suggestion associated with that. In fact, it might have been, that suggestion may have been, been tied together. I'm not exactly sure. So we went to the tree committee. And ultimately, after a series of discussion, the idea was not, was not to do one, a five K this year, either in support of Fiesta or the Arbor Day Earth Day. That's kind of been taken off the table and there's some consideration whether that would be done next year. But ultimately, in that discussion with the tree committee, there was support from the tree committee for a Chavano Park Fiesta medal. And to use that Fiesta medal as an incentive for participation in the Arbor Day, Earth Day. So something not, not defined, but be something that if you came and you participated, you got a Fiesta medal. And the, part of the, the reasoning was, well, people, when they hear about Chavano Park has a Fiesta medal, that will increase the attendance of the Arbor Earth Day. So I think I've covered the five K, just to go back into the medal discussion because that's, you know, where we really, I think, is the only discussion or issue that needs to be addressed now. I think everyone's in support of having Rayfeo at the Arbor Day Earth Day as well as the Christmas event. That's not a non-issue. So the question was, and I need guidance from council because it potentially would expend funds or expend effort, which we can do either one, is should we address and have a Chavano Park Fiesta medal? Reason why I bring it up now is because typically, I mean, there's a backlog for design. These things are typically made in China and we need to know about mid-December whether or not we have a design and whether, whether either the city purchases it or someone purchases it on behalf of the city. So I did ask other cities what they do. Actually, Xena did. And Xena did a good job of that, but I included a portion of that. Alamo Heights use general funds. Balcony Heights use hotel occupancy task, tax funds. Leon Valley use economic development funds. Hollywood Park uses general funds for purchase. Some of these cities have been doing this for a long time. Some of them, a little bit less. And I don't have the exact. Before I get into the cost and all that, I will tell you that, not knowing anything about Fiesta medals, but I have a number of them, we, we did create a basic design. And I, I kind of eked out those two as just as a starter. And I gave that to Xena. Xena contacted the Monarch Trophy Company. And they created this proposal here. I don't take any ownership of that. No one else worked on that other than the guy apparently who is the subject matter expert on metal designs. So that is, that's a possibility. That's not, if the city wants to do something like that, that's an option or it can be changed. But that's the initial option. So we did ask what the cost was. If you bought a thousand medals, it would be a dollar eighty-nine, a dollar eighty-nine cents for each medal, which would be just under two thousand dollars. If you bought, for example, five hundred, it would be two, two dollars and nine cents per medal. And so that's, that's where, it's actually a pretty good deal. I've heard some other estimates as high as six, seven dollars a medal. I don't think those guys are going directly to Monarch. They're going through someone else who's going to Monarch. So again, not bad for two dollars a medal, but that's something that the city council has to decide. So there was a question as to whether or not you can buy them and then you can sell them. And so the only thing I would say in consultation with Laura is that, that complicates things quite a bit if the city has to do it. We have to then register a tax ID number. Then we would have requirement to file monthly and quarterly taxes. You would basically have to charge a fee and then collect sales tax for that. Or you would charge a fee and sales tax together and you would, you would do that. And then someone would have to receive the funds. It would have to be accounted for very specifically, et cetera. So city staff can do it, but it's not something we would recommend. We, we, and I can tell you that we do put out a very high quality product every month, but we have our plates full. So again, there are a number of courses of action. Obviously, I think everyone's in agreement, we support Rayfeo in our events that we currently have and integrate them into the city sponsored events. That would be the minimal requirement. Another one, in addition to that, would approve a medal design or provide an alternate design and provide, or provide direction to design a medal. And then approve the purchase of a medal and quantity, or provide a donor, or find some other arrangements for, for the purchase of the medal. So financial impact varies depending on what you decide. I'll pause there and you can have a discussion.
Okay, very good. Do we have a motion to support the Fiesta activities for the three-hundredth anniversary of the city of San Antonio and to support our local Rayfeo?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, what, what is your motion to support? What are you looking to do, Mike?
I'll, I'll support the, you know, of course, the Rayfeo and, and the medals. I like the design. I think it's fine. It, it was there a, just before I get clarified here, is there a reason why we came up with a thousand? Is it just price or is that a break? Or do we have, do we have a need for a thousand?
I just asked for a price quota of five hundred and a thousand. That's, there was, I haven't done a detailed analysis to determine what the right number is.
Okay, then, well, okay, I'm lost here. I need to.
Okay, so, so you, you want to support the Rayfeo, great. We'd like to get a medal. How many? And who's going to be in charge of developing the design for the Rayfeo medal? Or do we go with the one that's been recommended?
I'll recommend that we go with the design that they've recommended.
Okay.
For one thousand.
For one thousand. Okay. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
We have a second. We're now open for discussion. Michelle?
Okay, so first of all, we need to clarify a couple of things. One, if Rayfeo, what we're going to do with Rayfeo is have him at our, and it could be him and the other two members of the Rayfeo court from prior, at the Christmas event, and then again, at the Arbor Day, Earth Day event. And that's what we're going to do for them. And, and as far as the medal, the medal will then be a city medal, not a Rayfeo medal.
That's right.
And if it's a city medal, then, then I don't have a problem with the city paying for the medal. If it was a Rayfeo medal, then I felt it ought to be underwritten by someone else. So I don't have a problem with that. But as far as how many and how we do it, I mean, there's been discussion on wanting to give them out at Blatman. I feel strongly that our citizens should benefit from the medal if we create it. It should be a perk that you get for going to Earth Day, Arbor Day. I don't want to give it out for free to non-residents at Blatman because Blatman is not just our residence. So that's, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Anybody else have a discussion? Bob?
I think those are all good points. The, the timeline is, did you say mid-December it needs to be?
It's quick. We have to do it tonight.
Because my, my idea was, was to actually have the Blatman students actually turn in designs by a certain time. But I think we may be on a really time, timeframe, so that may not work. I thought that would be maybe.
Although that's something. Although, that's something that we could consider in a future year.
Right.
I thought the same thing.
Or citizens doing it.
Or even our citizens, yeah. But even then, we don't have time, correct?
No.
Okay.
Just to be clear, I did not intend to come up with the final design. I had some ideas and said, "Hey, let's think about what we can do," and boom, bingo, we get this. And so, I didn't mean to get out in front of everyone, but I had to bring the issue forward, or we wouldn't, we would be sitting here right now thinking, "We need to come up with a design."
Then we wouldn't get our medals in time, and they'd cost a lot more money if we did, if we had to postpone it till January or February. So, we need to make a decision.
Can the money for these medals come out of the Arbor Day fund? We've got a $5,000 fund there. Otherwise, we're, wait, excuse me. Otherwise, we're talking about an expenditure that we didn't budget for, and we'll have to locate the money somewhere.
Okay. Bill, do we have funds available for this project?
So, there's a couple events we have every year, and some of them cost more and some that don't. And I know our most expensive one is July, and we get a lot of fundraising for that. And I'm going to defer to Xena in just a second, and I'm going to tell her, give her a heads up, to remind us, if she can remember, do we typically exceed the budget, meet the budget exactly, or where are we about on the Arbor Day budget? Do we come in about 5,000 with donations, or without?
Michelle, do you?
I'm going to amend the motion.
So, we do get donations of services from Republic and CPS for Arbor Day, but we do the petting zoo, and I can probably look it up real quick in previous councils, because I know we've passed that information.
Michelle?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to the motion to have the $2,000 come out of the general fund, and for y'all to determine where it should come from.
Okay. Mike, are you okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so the motion now says that the funds for the medals will come from the general fund as a source that will support the Rayfeo, will secure 1,000 medals for citizens, and the design will be the recommended design that Xena helped coordinate with Monarch. Okay? Is there any further discussion? Okay, there's been no further discuss, oh, Mike?
I assume there'd be no reason why we couldn't, you know, go out and ask for additional donations to cover this. I mean, I...
And we may find them, but...
Yeah, I'm willing to be one of those, so...
We're at the point, though, that it's, we have 18 days to get our order in, and that's not going to happen.
No, I agree. We need to get it done, but there shouldn't be a reason to stop us from getting some people to help support this. I don't think there's going to be a problem with that.
Yeah.
It's very likely, if there was a campaign to do that, that you might find someone that underwrites it, but it'll have to still come out of the general fund.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 6.7, Discussion Action R 2017-021, voting phase of selection process for the election of Bear Appraisal District Board of Directors for 2017-2018. Bill?
Actually, it's 1819.
1819, sorry.
Well, as you recall, we received a letter in August from the chief appraiser requesting a nomination. The city approved a resolution subsequent to that, nominating Michael W. Simpson and Sean Fitzpatrick to be considered for the Bear Appraisal Board of Directors. Both of those candidates then made the ballot. We then received a letter dated 18 October, which was in your attachment, referencing the voting phase and the selection process associated with that. Essentially, each taxing unit and voting entity gets a certain amount of votes. Our allocated number of votes are five. So, as required by Section 6.03K Texas text code, we may now cast our votes for the nominees. So, again, we have drafted a resolution nominating Michael W. Simpson and Sean Fitzpatrick as the city's candidates. Council may choose both, one or another candidate, as you feel appropriate in terms of how that goes. I would point out that five is an odd number.
Okay. We've all had an opportunity to look at the slate of people that have nominations that are in place, and I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution R 2017-0121, and for you to each insert the names and the numbers of candidates' votes to receive for the Bear County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Mr. Mayor, I would move approval of the resolution with all five votes going to Sean Fitzpatrick.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Hold a second.
Bob is second in the motion. We're now open for discussion. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Okay, the vote was three to one. Okay, we're now to item 6.8, Discussion Action, Chavano Estates Rock Wall Along Northwest Military Highway. Bill?
Okay, so I did some background information, as much as I know, obviously. I've only been here four years. I have some contacts. I've talked to a number of folks, and I'll do the best I can to paint this picture. I did talk to Laddie Denton, and he basically said, "In the 80s, as they were developing the estates, you know, they developed it in different plats and by sections, and generally started around Northwest Military Highway." But they, according to him, they intended to build a solid rock wall. At the city's request, according to him, they built a base, a base wall of two feet with cedar posts with fencing that occurred, associated with that. He then told me that after several years of complaints from the citizens, the city then came to the developer and asked that they rebuild the wall solid up to six, I said solid, but a wall up to six feet. And this was completed by building on top of the existing structure. As you know, over time, the fence has begun to deteriorate, lean over, and fall down. I know that in the 2012, 2013 timeframe, before I got here, it was considered, and that was actually an agenda item in 2013. At the time, the city manager's position was that it was on private property, and you could, the city was prohibited from taking any action. And I read through the staff's summary, and it was no black, it was no gray area. It was black and white. I have coordinated with the city attorney after several of the residents came to talk to me and give me the history behind this. And ultimately, I'm just going to tell you that if the city were to decide that there was a public gain and public benefit to having a rock wall based upon the scenic appeal, the atmosphere, et cetera, to the city, it is legal. So, that's the bottom line. So, let me just back up. In August of this year, Mr. Carter came in and met with me concerning the west side of the city hall. And his assessment was, hey, you know, most of the area that's bad is between South Warbler and a few hundred yards south of that, pretty much, the wall's in good shape besides that. And his basic premise was, because it's not based upon a foundation, and there's dirt there, whereas other places, there is, there's a rock foundation. You heard him, he spent about 40K on it. I won't go through all that stuff, because he did a pretty good job of talking about that. Since August, that section did fall. And in addition to that section, there's two sections of the wall that are smaller, much smaller, that are on Goodman's property as well. I've had two rock masons do an assessment of that. One is the guy that, the firm that does all the repairs of Chavano Creek. And the other one is the firm that does all the work for Bitter Blue in current work, and did the extension of Bentley Manor. The Chavano Creek firm did a pretty deliberate job of foot-by-foot assessing, and gave me a diagram of which sections are in need of repair now, which are in fair condition, and which is a good section. And you can see the majority of the fences in pretty good condition. In summary, there's a total of 3,356 feet, of which 2,386 are in good shape, 790 are in fair shape, and 180 are in need of repair now. Obviously, he also came back and said, "If you're going to do that 180, you really need to rip out the..." Both firms said, "You need to rip out the existing, put a foundation on there, and then build it up properly, so you're not having to do this again." I've got, I asked them to both look at the 180 feet that would basically corner up both of those, all three of those areas, and give me a price estimate. And I got two price estimates. The firm that does Chavano Creek basically says, "If I'm going to do that, I wouldn't have three contiguous, three separated segments. I'd rip the whole thing out, and you build your one wall that would cover through all those three things." So, we really have three questions to consider. One, does the wall provide a public benefit? And as such, is the expenditure of public funds legal? Assuming that the answer is yes, does council make a determination, if the council does make a determination that the wall provides a benefit, should the city expend funds for repair? And if so, how much should they expend? If the repair is completed, what future repairs may be required, and how does this impact future requirements? So, I've addressed each one of them. I believe the walls are generally considered, especially surrounding prominent subdivisions, as a public benefit based upon the protection they provide, as well as the visual character and security they display. And a masonry wall is certainly a lot more attractive than a fence and/or other types of walls. I included in your council packet, and I'm not going to go over it unless you ask me to, or Dan can review it, a detailed discussion that I've had with Charlie Zek over a series of iterations that, can this be considered a public benefit? Okay, let me clarify what you just said. Does this mean this? Yes, it means this. And ultimately, based upon the appearance and the protection the wall provides, council can legally, that's your policy decision, but can declare it a public benefit. So, then the question is, if you do that, would you want to expend funds? Now, Mr. Carter came in and said, "Look, I realize what the Declaration of Conditions and covenant restrictions say, says that I must repair my fence, my wall. But I think that the city and the developer have some responsibility, because the developer didn't do it the standard the city allowed them when they built that four-foot extension." And I'm repeating what he said. I'm not telling you, that's my position, but that he's done that. In his case, he said that he would like to see a cost-splitting arrangement, where the city paid some, and Bitter Blue paid some, and he would pay some. He didn't give me a specific one-third, 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 but I kind of made that assumption. And I went forward to Laddie Denton, and I said, "Look, this is a proposal. I have no idea what city council is going to even think, nor do I, really don't know what any of you think, except for one, because you came and called and told me. But if it was supported by city council, would you consider participating in some sort of cost-sharing arrangement?" He said, "Yes." I told him I wouldn't hold him, I wouldn't commit for him what the amount was, but I believe that you can feel fairly secure at a one-third arrangement as you move forward in there. I included in your package the Declaration of Conditions, covenants, and restrictions. There's three different ones. Two of them require that the owners maintain a fence. One requires a wall. Future repairs is probably the bigger question. The mayor and I actually walked that fence. I've walked it with both contractors. I've walked it with the public works director. And the fence that's most vulnerable would be addressed by 290 feet of repair, which was the proposal that I got for $57,000. There is also the fact that parts of that fence are not capped, and the capping of that fence, actually, the holes in the cap pay, you know, a considerable effect in terms of deteriorating the fence quickly. And so, not included in this cost, but something that we may or may want to consider, I'll take guidance from you, is whether or not we should participate in capping the rest of that, because that is probably the most significant factor which is causing it to deteriorate. Talking with the masonry, first of all, talking to Bitter Blue, they did the Northwest Military Highway first, and then as they expanded westerly, or in most cases, westerly, they built the Hubner and the De Zavala, and that is of a different construction. And it's a solid-wall fence, which is in much better shape. And I can ask the attorney, I should have keyed him in on this, is if council were to make a decision that they're going to go ahead and repair this, you know, they would have set a precedence for doing that, but I don't believe they would be legally bound to do that subsequently. Each case could be individually considered, but I'll ask Dan to weigh in on that, because I think that, in my mind, is the biggest question. If you do this, then what's that mean for the future? So, Dan, I don't know. Do you have, if we were to expend some funds now in an arrangement, would that obligate us in any way in the future if the wall fell down in another place?
Yeah, no, it really wouldn't. It's going to depend on the determinations made by the council, whether or not the council finds a public purpose is served by doing any repairs whatsoever. So, I don't see that as binding future councils to the same course of action, what, they'd have to make those same findings.
Knowing the last, you probably, knowing the last thing I'd say is, you've probably heard, like I've heard, a lot of folks that have called me personally and asked me when we were going to repair the wall, because the assumption is it was a city wall. Folks from outside of Chavano Park, as well as residents that are inside. So, you may or may not have received that feedback, but I'll pause now, take, answer any questions I can.
Well, as a community, our, the thing that we sell to our residents, to the community at large, and to the people that come to Chavano Park is the image of Chavano Park. And I agree with Bill that that is certainly an eyesore in the community. And that's not saying anything about Basil, and, you know, things like this happen, and that's, he didn't do anything that was bad about it. The question that we have is, do we want it fixed? And, you know, if y'all read the memo from the attorney, there are things that we can do to get it fixed. We can expend money, and then there's a case out of Houston that says you can sue people to enforce their deed covenants. Well, if you're going to sue people over something this small, why don't you just spend the money that you would have had to spend on attorneys to get it fixed to start with, and not have to fight with your neighbors? But as a group, we have to decide whether there, as a public policy, maintaining the image on such a visible portion of the community is worthwhile. And that is up to the city council members to make that determination. And so, with that, I'm going to entertain a motion to consider action on the Chavano Estates Rock Wall Along Northwest Military Drive. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to discuss the issue. Motion by Bob, second by Mike Simpson. Okay, who wants to speak first? Mike?
I have some questions. First of all, how many residents are affected by the wall? Is it currently the 190 feet? How many properties?
Directly, there's two.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, you know, direct property is affected, you know, not counting people driving by.
Right, right. I'm...okay.
And both of them are here.
Wait, it says nine back there.
Basil's saying that there are nine property owners. Lowell, what do you think?
Oh, I...well, I'm...a section out in front of Basil's, and then there's a section in front of mine. Two of them, Lowell, but yes.
And there's another one on Warbler, right, on the other entrance?
Yeah, there's some others where it's starting to get some deterioration.
Yep, so the immediate three spots that have fallen, it's two. The extended wall down towards Heebner, and then maybe a little bit area between South Warbler and North Area. There's more. I mean, I don't know what your nine was, but there's only two that have the wall that has fallen. Three...no, there's three places. There's three places, two residents.
Okay, the next question I would have is, what, if any, impact do we expect Northwest Military project to have on this fence? Or is that too speculative at this point?
Well, I can tell you that actually Mr. Carter asked, you know, mentioned that to me in one of the meetings. We addressed that in the Tech Dot meeting. And, you know, their answer was, it won't have any effect. I'm not convinced that it won't, but one of the questions was, well, if they use dynamite to blast...some sort of blasting, then that would affect. And they...part of what they're gonna...you're going to see proposed is they're trying to minimize in that cliff area, in that escarpment, the actual cutting into that. And so, as part of the design piece for accounting for the drainage, they're talking...they are already saying their recommended solution is a stormwater drainage system, which would reduce the amount of, if any, effects that go into that wall that's in the south part. So I can follow that up. I don't have the exact answer. We probably won't know until they get further in the design phase of that. I mean, I got their answer, but some of those areas, especially when it starts to lean like that, you know, maybe it's not...maybe they're accounting for a wall built to standard. But further on, down south, it's in pretty good shape where it's most vulnerable. Doesn't mean it won't fall in some places.
Okay. Mike?
One more question, please. Where would we go in the budget if we were going to try to fund this, or is this going to require a budget amendment?
It would require a budget amendment. The only thing I would say, again, I don't have...the financials that are in the...this month's agenda really start the new FY and the new budget.
Well, we have impact fee money, and that would certainly be one of the sources that we could go to.
Yeah, those...and there may be some areas that you could go in there.
We haven't used them yet, but they are available.
Also, I would say, I don't know, you know, if you take a look, you're going to have some...we didn't spend everything we budgeted for last year, and we brought in more revenue than we anticipated, even after the budget. And so that was about...it was a little over $400,000. So there is monies that can be, you know, we typically have looked at balancing the fund, you know, to the...creating the fund balance at 50%, and then taking any excess and putting it into capital improvements. I haven't done the math associated with that, but...
Yeah, we don't do that until December or January, so, you know, not...I'm not surprised you haven't done that yet.
You know...
Then, Mr. Mayor, one last...excuse me, would be a comment. I think that maintaining that wall is a public benefit, and I would very much be in favor of a partnership approach to this, especially if we can get the guy who built it originally to help pony up. I realize that the last time, they said, "No, it's the individual responsibility." And I certainly appreciate the fact that they did pay the money and helped make our city look better. But I think it is a public benefit, because that's one of the first things people see as they drive from south to north into the city on Northwest Military. And especially if we get this going as a public-private cooperation thing, I would be most for it.
Okay. Do we have anybody else? Michelle?
Um...it may not be legally enforceable to set a precedent and have future councils be bound by what we do, but it would be pretty hard, I think, for a future council to say no if our council said yes, for one thing. Now, you said, because we talked earlier today, you did call and find out that De Zavala and Heebner were built correctly, the rock walls, or you're assuming that because they look better?
I asked them specifically if there was, you know, that they appear to be built differently and higher...if you just take a look at the rocks and the way the rocks are, they're built structurally sound, more sound. And they were built subsequently...they were built, as I understand it, later as the development went, when they had...and they built it all at once, as opposed to the two-phase approach to here where they have the solid base of rocks, not on a foundation, and then they tried to extend it up not to standard.
Okay. And how many homeowners do we have along Northwest Military that are in the estate section?
I don't know that answer. I don't know the answer.
Did you say nine or 12?
I think Basil said there were nine.
How many total homeowners along Northwest Military Highway?
He's actually having some trouble hearing.
Yeah, I know he does. Yeah.
How many families...how many homes back up to Northwest Military? Do you know? Uh, in the estate?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
There's probably about 15.
Okay.
May I say something?
Actually, Basil, you may not say something. We asked you a specific question, but you're not recognized for this specific topic. So I apologize, but you're not recognized. Okay, Michelle?
So, in thinking about it, and let's play devil's advocate, yes, I think it's important to have the rock wall. Do I think it's a public benefit to have that wall looking nice? Yes. But then, so would coming off of 1604, south on Northwest Military, all the homes that back up by Turkey Creek and wherever have regular wood walls, and why wouldn't we want to make those rock, too, and have it all be rock and look better? Because that will be something that someone will bring up. And I don't know if there's a possibility to consider whether they deed the rock wall area to the city, or we have some sort of easement. Is there some way to do that that makes that more palpable to people as far as using public funds for...on a private property?
I don't know the answer to that, but...
I'm looking at your attorney.
Maybe...maybe attorney does.
It's something we could look at for sure. I mean, there are other options, and the mayor alluded to the Houston case, which dealt with enforcing deed restrictions. But the other options are, you know, if this is declared a public nuisance. I mean, if it's a public nuisance, then you...and it's not abated by the property owner, of course, you have the right to go in and abate it and repair it and lean the property. So, I mean, there's different approaches to this, just like the public-private partnership and having all those come together, which is why I don't think you're necessarily setting any kind of precedent for future councils, because every one of these circumstances is going to be viewed differently and require that same analysis.
Yeah, the distinction is, we can declare a public purpose, but every council has the purse strings of the city.
I understand.
And so, it may be difficult, but each council can make that spending decision, just as we make the spending decisions, and we pick projects that council likes, and then other projects are pushed off into future years. That can always happen here as well. Any...Bob?
Yeah, I've been conflicted about this for several months. I actually called Bill and asked him. I think I actually saw Bill out there surveying one day, and I drive by it every day. And I think my assumption, like many of the residents or people outside the city, was that, you know, before I moved here, was that wall was a city-owned wall, however it is private property. So I've been conflicted, because I believe that we have to be careful in spending tax dollars on private properties. However, I think we have to be consistent in our approach to this, because, you know, we just looked at a drainage study that's going to affect the entire city, of which many of those areas are on private property. And we're going to have to navigate through that, and we're going to do some things that impact the city and impact private citizens on their properties that happen to be private property. I do think it's a...it's a wall that is very important to the city. I think it needs to be repaired. I do very much like the fact that all three parties are agreeing to do this. Again, I'm very reticent to spend tax dollars on things that are on private property, but I think this merits a very strong consideration. I'd be in favor of it.
Mike?
There are already portions of that wall on Northwest Military that are board-fenced down toward the southern end. What difference would it make to let them put board-fenced up there? Maybe it won't look as good, but there are some...
Are you talking about...you're talking about it's board-fenced along Heebner Road?
No, it's board-fenced along Northwest Military, as you get up where the berm on the...down towards the drainage end.
Oh, that's...but that's a drainage issue. That doesn't have to do with the rock wall. That was...
It ties into the walk-wall at Heebner. It goes Heebner there. Why isn't a drainage issue there? I...I'm afraid that if we touch that rock wall in the 290 feet or whatever, we're going to set off a chain reaction going south. And we're going to be responsible for that. And I do think when Tech Dot gets into expanding the road, where they're going to have to dig into that embankment where it gets high down there, that there is going to be potential for that wall falling. And Tech Dot probably will have to fix that, but it could just take down everything that we do. I like Basil a lot and all those people. They got a bad deal. The deal was Denton's problem, not the city. I won't vote to spend any city money on a private property for that wall.
Okay. Do we have any other comments from the council members? Okay, yeah, we voted to consider it. We didn't make any recommendation. Do, you know, do you want to quantify exactly what your recommendation is back to Bill? Because we're in the exploratory phase, I think. Do you want to authorize him to spend an amount of money up to X? Do you want him to further explore this? Do you want him to see where he can negotiate out with the parties? Do we want to shelve the issue tonight? Do we want to shelve the issue permanently?
I don't have a problem with exploring the options of getting some sort of easement, because that's what we're going to have to do with drainage. We can't just go on people's property and choose to do stuff. And so, if we're going to take on the responsibility, and I don't have a problem with making that wall a solid wall that we're responsible for. It's going to be a lot of money, but it's something...if it's something we're going to do, then I think we have to do it right, and it needs to be our responsibility on our city property. But then we also have to consider the houses that are all along, all the way up to 1604 on the same side that have wood fences, too. Why wouldn't we want that to all be a rock wall? Why wouldn't we want it all to have the same look? I don't know. But I know people are going to bring that up.
Yeah, but there's a hodgepodge of corners and front-facing, and that's...
That's true.
That makes for different issues. Okay, so are you making...would you make a motion to substitute to say, "I would...I request that we explore receiving an easement, and if we can't get an easement," I think I'm hearing you say, "Well, I don't want to spend the money if we don't own the rock wall." Is that what I'm hearing you say, Michelle?
Yes.
Okay, so are you making a motion for us...are you making a substitutionary motion to...
Investigate.
Investigate an easement, acquiring an easement, so that we can then have a repair to our wall as opposed to their wall?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the substitute...a second on the motion to substitute?
I'll second that one.
Okay. Okay, now we're going to discuss the motion to substitute. The motion to substitute would have Bill explore securing an easement for the entire wall along Northwest Military Drive to be owned by the city of Chavano Park. Bill, Dan, do you have any comments that you can help us with before we delve into discussion?
No, I think that's a...that is a conversation that will have to be had.
I think we should have had it already before we got to this point, frankly.
Well, yes, perhaps, but at the same time, you don't require an easement if it's a nuisance, right? You have the right to go in and abate it with or without a nuisance, on private property or not.
But we're not going to abate it and go after the homeowner to pay for it.
Well, I understand. That's the council's...
I wouldn't.
That's the council's discretion, certainly. And even if you did, it wouldn't have to be for the whole amount. But that's neither here nor there. But I think that if the direction back to Bill, it needs to be broad enough where that conversation can include negotiating whatever that splitting of the amounts would be to...so when it comes back to council, it's a complete package to consider, and, you know, whether it's going to be bid by the city, or if it's going to be the developer, whomever. So that would be my only suggestion, is that we make sure it's broad enough direction.
And that's a good point, too, because I hadn't brought it up.
I also think that you can...you can give direction to repair this section, and then also take...because my only thing is, it's one thing to repair a 290-foot section of wall. And there may be then possibilities and expectations in the future. I got that. But the actions aren't mutually exclusive. You can repair this section of the wall, and then you can also...I can also then pursue, what does it take to get an easement and secure an easement?
Why wouldn't you do that first?
I don't...I don't think you need to do that first, but...
Okay, Mike?
First of all, a question. Are we talking about an easement, or are we talking about deeding the wall?
Yeah, either one.
I think she's talking about...
I said deed as well as easement, whichever.
I'm asking the attorney, what's your recommendation here?
I would not own the wall if I were the city. I mean, having an easement to go on property is different than having to maintain that wall once it's repaired. I mean, if the city wants to own that wall, can, you're going to be responsible for repairs going forward. But I don't think you're required to take that on just because you have an easement to go on. It's just like, people are responsible for maintaining the sidewalks in front of the house, even if the city installs those going forward typically.
Really?
Yes. You maintain it. You...most cities, you're required to maintain your curb if there's problems with your curb. So the cities don't have to take on the responsibility. And so I would not recommend that you own that wall because of what can go wrong with it. But certainly, an easement, yes, if that's the approach you want to take.
There's 14...there's 14 property owners, just to see.
What would be the advantage of us obtaining an easement to the wall?
Well, the advantage would be, right now, the easement would be even a temporary construction easement, to go on private property and construct the wall. I don't know that you need one in perpetuity, but you're going to at least need a temporary easement if you're going to go on private property, construct a wall, not under the authority of it being declared a public nuisance. I mean, whether it's the city that goes on there, or if it's your developer that goes on there, someone's going to have to have that permission from the private property owner, because I don't think the wall's in Tech Dot's right of way.
Mm-mm.
But the point that I'm trying to find out is, if we have an easement, that there's effectively no difference between what we have right now, as far as the city's...city ownership, city property, and what we would have after an easement. The easement is permission to enter and do the work, but it's still private property. There's no change in that basic argument that I can hear. Am I missing something?
No, I agree with you.
Dan, one more question. If there's 14 property owners, and I can see the point of, if the city wanted to own the wall and then maintain it, we want it to be on our property. I can see that. But just think about the costs associated with...wouldn't we have to then get 14 owners to agree... But just think about the costs associated with, wouldn't we have to then get 14 owners to agree to sell it to us, deed it to us, then replat it and then go through surveying and lots of other moving parts?
Honestly, I think what you're looking at is, is the temporary, is akin to a temporary construction easement. I mean, I think that's as much as the city needs if it's going to involve itself in this.
Okay. Michelle, I'm going to direct that back to you because it's your concept, so let's, let's talk about it from what you were envisioning for the community as far as a temporary construction easement or for permanent ownership of the wall.
I cannot support using taxpayer dollars to fix a wall on private property unless it's, becomes our city's wall or responsibility. And so however we do that, and I don't know how to do, you can't do that with an easement, I understand, so then that means it needs to be a deed. Otherwise, I just am not going to be able to support that.
Okay, so your motion, to clarify your motion, is to secure a deed of the entire length of Northwest Military's wall or only?
The portions that need to be repaired.
Only the portions that are represented by the two individuals, the two individual families who are here this evening. Is that, is that what you're looking to acquire the ownership of?
Of any of the properties that we would be required to rebuild the wall on because there is another one, a third. There's actually at least four or five that the wall's falling down on. Not as bad as theirs, but.
Yeah, theirs are down.
Yeah.
Theirs are certainly down. Okay, so are you willing to, is your motion to acquire the wall from Basil and Lowell, Basil and Lowell at this time with negotiation with the remaining property owners? That if they will deed us their wall, then we will take responsibility on a cooperative basis. I'm assuming that you included that as a part of the, we'll take it, but you have to give us some money to take your wall?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm just asking, I'm just asking. And these are all back to Bill to negotiate.
I want Bill to go back and negotiate and see what he can come up with. I think it's an option we should have explored before we got to this point.
Okay, you know, that, that's kind of beyond the scope of your substitutionary motion. And so I'd like for you to reword that so that Mike can know whether he's going to actually second your substitutionary motion on what we have just kind of culled out of what you're saying.
Just call the question.
Mike, are you okay with her substitutionary stuff?
I call the question.
She wants to own the wall on this, okay. Okay. She wants to own the part of the wall that belongs.
I want to explore the other options that are available as far as ownership of the wall and repairing the wall. And him to bring us back information.
An exploration. That's what we're, okay, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, then your substitutionary motion, okay. Okay, do we have any further discussion on the motion to substitute? Okay, if we don't have any further discussion on the motion to substitute, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure exactly what the motion is. Could someone read the motion so I would know how to vote?
I will have to listen to the tape because I have two other options to bring back to council. So I know there was a little bit more discussion in our respect.
To explore options to acquire the rock wall ownership. And for Bill to negotiate a contribution of funds from Denton Communities or Butter Blue, whichever one it is, and the property owners. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, now can you read that back to Mike? And, and a point of order on the procedural question, the vote, we're going to retake the vote in light of Mike's question. I'm going to rule that the vote is, is in abeyance until we have the ordinance, have the motion read back. Okay?
Explore other options. Fire in the rock wall. Fire in the rock wall. Ownership, negotiate. Contributions from, of funds from Better Blue and property ownership.
Okay, is that clear enough, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, I'm now going to take a vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mike?
Before you move on, what are we going to do about, about the repairs to it in the meantime?
Okay, do you want to make a secondary motion on authorizing the city manager to, oh, I'm sorry, that was the substitutionary motion. So now that is the primary motion and we're going to be voting on it. We're open for discussion on the primary motion. Mike, I'm going to recognize you first for the discussion on the primary motion.
Well, okay, the, the, as I understand, the motion before us is what we just voted on. And it doesn't, doesn't address what we do about the, the current collapsed walls. And so I'm good with the, the motion as it stands, but are we looking at, how, how long are we looking at having the wall down before something is done?
Well, when's our December meeting?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Bill, are you going to be in a position to come back to us by December the eighteenth?
I believe so in terms of, you know, if you're talking about, if you're talking about what it takes to get a deed restriction and to, to have the, the property deeded over to the city. I mean, in my mind, I just talk, you know, we have to replat it and we have to get them to donate. It has to be surveyed. I won't have it done then, but I could have estimates associated with that and the feasibility. I mean, each one of these, there's 14 property owners, they would have to donate the, donate or sell the property to the city. Each property would have to be replatted. If that was the case, it had to be surveyed. Then it'd have to go through the Planning and Zoning Commission and then they have to go up to, to council associated with that.
Okay, but first you have to talk to the homeowners and see if they're even willing to do that.
I'm just guessing. I could probably, you know, I haven't talked to them. You're right. Just thinking, they would love to get, you know, to pass ownership of the wall to the city. And I can research that. I think that is, you know, the scope of that, just as a side comment, is far greater than what, you know, what was originally proposed.
Okay. Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion to substitute? The, the, the primary motion?
Primary motion.
Is there any, is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Okay, item 6.9, Discussion Action Resolution R 2017-023, Approving City Hall Security Measures, Possible Executive Session Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551-076, Deliberation Regarding Security Personnel and Devices. Bill, you want to start us out on this?
Okay. Yeah. What I'll just say is today's security environment and the recent incidents in public places, specifically in public places, requires the city to be vigilant and to consider prudent security measures. Specifically, we're talking about two times when we really have public gatherings here in this chamber that are in official capacity, which would be when we assemble court and also when we have public meetings like city council meetings, planning, zoning, et cetera. So there's a number of options and I'm going to go most, most restrictive to least restrictive or et cetera, and I'll kind of talk through that. There's probably more options in this, but basic terms. The most extensive and restrictive policy would, would be to create a policy prohibiting handguns during posted meetings and during court sections, sessions. And implied in that is if you're going to do that, 100% of the persons and need to be, and their bags need to be checked. And I will just leave it at that because we're going to address that in the subsequent agenda item. The, the next more extensive or restrictive policy would be to pass a policy that would state that 100% of persons and their bags would be checked with metal detectors for governmental meetings that are subject to the Open Meetings Act. And then that implies, because you haven't prohibited the weapons, that you're going to allow those folks with concealed handgun license to be able to bring that in. I can tell you, I did not draft a policy in final form for that option. But it's something that can be considered. Option three is to authorize bag searches, a policy that simply authorizes bag searches for municipal court, court offices, or a government meeting that is subject to the Open Meetings Act. And I would talk more about that later. We could also, as a minimal requirement, increase police presence during city meetings and public gatherings. And finally, we could take no action. At this point in time, I would request that we go to executive session because we have the authorization to do that if we want to talk about security personnel or security devices, equipment.
Okay. Do I have a motion to recess to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551-076 for deliberation regarding security personnel and devices?
So moved.
A motion from Michelle. Do I have a second? Second from Bob. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Michelle, are you going to vote?
Oh, aye, sorry.
Okay, all opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned to executive session. It is now 9:12. It is now 9:47. City Council has completed its executive session on the 27th day of November at 9:47 PM. We're going to return back to item 6.9. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R 2017-023, approving City Hall Security Measures?
So moved.
Mayor?
We have a motion. Yeah, Bill?
Okay, so just to clarify, the motion that I requested was to approve the purchase of metal detectors, increase police presence at gatherings of public places and public meetings of government entities, and approval of resolution authorizing bag searches. And I'd be glad to discuss my justification for that.
Okay. Bill, is that in, all in the resolution? Or do we need to instruct you to provide a policy concerning the same?
No, the resolution authorizes the bag searches and that's done separately, okay? The, in support of that, again, we are recommending the purchase of metal detectors and increased police presence. There's going to be some added costs associated with bad, bag searches. There's going to be some added tools that they need associated with that. Now, we didn't discuss all this in, in the executive session, but I want to, I want to refer you to the diagram, or actually the comparison matrix where I had Captain Davis go out and look at what 20 cities are doing.
Yes.
Of that, and again, we'll talk about the first thing first, but 11 of those cities prohibit handguns. And what you'll see is that not all of the cities that prohibit handguns have a metal detector. But a lot of the other cities that don't have a, that don't, don't have a policy prohibiting handguns, even though they don't have a policy prohibiting handguns, they have a metal detector. Okay, because what you're trying to do is you're trying to keep people, I mean, you're not trying to keep people that are legally licensed to carry to come in here necessarily under what we're considering now. That's another item for later on. All right, but the initial step ought to be to authorize bag searches, which if you're going to bring in something and you have an intent to cause harm, you're going to, you're going to secure it. Either in a bag or you're going to have it on your presence. So having a metal detector is a visual deterrent because people will know about it. They will see it. It's also a physical deterrent because if you have a weapon in your bag or if you have it concealed on your, on your person, then if you see that there's a metal detector, you're either going to say, well, I can't come in because I'll be detected. Or if you're doing illegally, you'll, you'll declare it and you'll say, I have a legal weapon and here's my license. So under, under this piece here, we're authorizing bag searches associated with that. And you can see that the majority of the cities polled have increased police presence. Not every city has taken an action to specifically authorize a bag search. But in consultation with the attorneys, that goes a long way for us with increased presence to just to A, double check those bags that might seem suspicious. They're large or they're unusual. And the word will get out and it will also be a deterrent. So I just want to clarify, that's what the motion requested is. And I think that just authorizing bag searches without a metal detector is, is difficult. I did talk to, you know, I had, I had numerous conversations with Judge Takis as well. And, because he absolutely prohibits weapons in here, but he has no enforcement capacity for that. Someone asked me today, does, has Judge Takis specifically authorized the metal detectors? And I tried to get ahold of him. I didn't get a chance to do that, but I talked to the city prosecutor who is the judge for four cities. Three of the four cities he, he is a prosecutor in, has metal detector. And the one that he's most concerned about is the one that doesn't and absolutely supports a metal detector. So the purchase of a metal detector doesn't mean that every single meeting, we're going to put a metal detector out there and force everyone to walk through it. It does allow us, every single court appearance, to put a metal detector out there, do a bag search and, and to check bags associated with these people that are coming in and who may be very unhappy with what, what is going on in the court system. So the tools are there if we purchase them. Implementation of that can be done based on a common sense basis. And again, you know, if you authorize the purchase, there will have to be a budget amendment associated with that. We have $57,000 in court security funds, which are only available to secure the court. So purchasing of the metal detectors to support the court could also be used with other general meetings and assemblies associated with that. So I'll pause it there.
Okay. So there's a resolution and then there's a follow-on with, because it's not in the resolution, the acquisition of the capital items that you have recommended. Is that correct?
You have, yeah. The motion includes the purchase of metal detectors, increased police presence at gatherings and the approval of the resolution.
The one in Zena's Dropbox. Oh, no, I was looking at the resolution itself. Okay.
There's three approval actions that I'm proposing. Now, you may oppose some of those and I'd be glad to talk to you about them, but.
No, no. Okay, so the proposed motion is to approve the resolution and to authorize the purchase of metal detectors, increase police presence at gatherings of public places and public meetings of governmental entities. Is that correct? Which is the resolution?
The resolution authorizing bag searches, that is correct.
And the resolution authorizes bag searches. Okay. Do we have a motion concerning City Hall security? Did we? No.
You made a motion to approve the resolution, but it did not include the other, so maybe you might want to.
So I'm going to entertain your motion again.
So moved.
Michelle has made a motion. Would you read the exact language?
To approve the purchase of metal detectors, increase police presence at gatherings of public places and public meetings of government entities and approval of Resolution R 2017-023, authorizing bag searches in the municipal court, court offices, or a governmental meeting that is subject to the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, very good. Do I have a second? Bob, a second in the motion and we're now open for discussion on the motion. Mike?
I would oppose almost everything here. At city council meetings, we almost always have two sworn officers here, the chief and the chief. If we adopt this, we're going to bring even more police in here. I'm very comfortable if all we do is just bring some more police in. I don't feel the need to, but some do. The other, the thing that I am loathe to do. The other, the thing that I am loath to do is enter a gun-free zone so that I can't defend myself.
Yeah, Mike, that, that is the next item. That is not on this agenda item.
The metal detector is, okay. Well, if the judge wants a metal detector, tell him to come talk to us about getting a metal detector, rather than us using his funds to accomplish our, our means or our ends here. I, I just don't think that anything more than perhaps increased uniformed officer presence is necessary. And for sure, I disagree with the, the drawings that accompany the resolution, that someone can't come in from out front and use the bathroom without subjecting themselves to a trespass citation. So I, I just would oppose all of the, all of the specifics here, and would favor just as necessary, increased officer presence at these meetings.
Okay.
I just wanna go on record because I am requesting that we use a, bring, buy a metal detector and metal detector wands, and use the court security fund to do that, and which I know the judge supports. The judge has already declared the court offices, including the bathroom, et cetera, as all the common areas, soon as you go into that, is, is part of the court and court offices. That's separate, and separate, go to Exhibit B. Exhibit B doesn't, is room subject to the Texas Open Meetings Act, does not include the court office, but it would also include the corridor, 'cause as soon as you come in, it's a public gathering. So if we had a metal detector, and I just wanna clarify this, there would be nothing that prevents any citizen or council member to bring in a weapon if they had a concealed carry license. If you have a concealed, just like you enter into the Capitol.
Now, you're doing the same thing that Mike did, you're straying into Item 610. So we will, we'll address that as the next item.
The metal detector itself, you're right, but the metal detector itself does not prohibit a weapon from coming in here.
Okay.
That is a policy that has to be decided later on. That was my clarification.
Okay. Do we have, do we have any more discussion?
Yes.
Michelle?
I am not an expert in how to protect us and the citizens when they are in city hall and at meetings. Therefore, I defer to the city manager and the chief of police, and because this is requested on their behalf, I support it.
I would like to address this to Chief Lacy, and if you would step up to the, the podium. Chief, Bill has told us that he supports the presence of metal detectors, wands, and the policy as set forth in the motion from Michelle Ross. And I would like to have your opinion on this.
I, I'm in agreement with City Manager Hill. I, I feel that in the twenty-first century, we have to be considering security at all times. And I have had several meetings with the manager over this, and we've had long discussions. And I'm in total agreement with what he's asking for. I have no issues with anything that's there, including the additional police officers if, if and when needed. And we will certainly handle any of this work that we need to do. We're, we're here to take care of everybody. The public that's at the meetings, y'all. And we, we wanna try to do as, as good a job as we can, and I believe with what Mr. Hill's asking for, it's gonna give us a greater chance at doing that for y'all.
Okay. I have a question also on, on Section Four, Dan, where it says, "The city council directs the city manager or is designated to post the signs stating the above policy." You know, the policy is very limited. Does the policy include how searches are undertaken? Or do we need to also authorize Bill to implement a policy that would set how and when we're doing the things that we just discussed? Do we need to expand the scope of Section Four?
Right, no, I think, no, Mayor, I don't. I, I believe that the sign would, would say essentially that, that all bags are subject to search. From there on, it's in the discretion of the police officer how that takes place.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Okay, Mike?
For the chief, how many folks would you need to run a bag search and the metal detector?
Alderman, what, what I would say is, with a walkthrough metal detector, I would want one officer manning that. I would have a second officer there who not only can be watching the lobby, but would be, if we're doing a bag search, they would conduct the search of the bag. And if the magnetometer sat off on the person walking through, then they would then do the secondary search to try to keep the line moving as quickly as possible.
So at least two, two additional officers?
And I would already be here, and, and that, one of those two would probably then be gone if we didn't need them, or they would either be floating. We, we would look at, at where we would put people and staffing.
Wouldn't it require someone there for the entirety of the meeting?
The way I did it with Harris County was, we were there as the meeting went on, and then one of the officers here, if someone came up, then they would check them.
Okay, so at least one additional officer?
Yeah, once it's on, it's gonna have to be there, and if people come and go, or come in late, we would have to watch that.
Okay, then, Mr. Mayor. We've had a speech for, or speaking for it. Unlike the previous speaker, I do have experience securing areas, securing dignitaries, responding to active threats, and I think this is way overkill.
Okay. That said, does anyone have anything that they would like to add? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
The motion carries three to one. Item 610, Discussion Action Resolution R. 2017-024 approving a city policy prohibiting handguns at meetings of governmental bodies, and to post the notices advising the public of the prohibition of carrying a handgun on court facilities and/or for open meetings to the public. Bill?
As the chief has said, we've talked about all these options. And the, the level that we've kind of come to agreement based upon risk assessment and what is tailored into to our environment, that minimum requirement was exactly what you just passed here recently. As early as 2014, our city attorney has, has been suggesting that the city council at least address a policy that would consider banning handguns into the city hall, as well as banning a policy, or making a policy that supports the municipal judge in his band, that bans it during, during court. Of course, it's against the law to do that associated with, in a court, but his determination that as you enter into the foyer, that that constitutes the court, the area of the court offices. So I will just say right now that this is not something that I'm pushing hard, but I want to make it very clear that you have an opportunity to consider this, and, and you should, you should consider it based upon that. As I mentioned before, twenty cities polled, eleven of them have a policy prohibiting weapons from the court. Now, you know, chief and I have talked about, if you have a policy prohibiting weapons, the only people that's going to deter is the people that are law-abiding citizens. So we've talked about that. And again, it goes back to the only way really to enforce the safety and to, to elevate the security is to have security measures that support that. So again, you've seen, you've seen the packet, I assume, and I'll just kinda tell you that this resolution is in two parts. You can approve both parts, which would be to prohibit handguns in municipal court, the second part being prohibit guns in the, in the meetings, subject to the Open Meetings Act. Or you can approve both of them. The municipal judge, and I've included all that in your packet, has already prohibited handguns in the court and court offices. The city attorney tells us that minimum that we should consider, and strongly, and they recommend that we pass a resolution supporting that in terms of the municipal judge. Back as early as 2014, they also recommended that we consider a policy prohibiting handguns in city hall. And that's a policy decision. What I prepared for you is a resolution that includes both parts of that. You can approve one part, either or, open meetings or court, or you can approve both, or you can approve none. So that's the way it lays out. I'll just pause there and see if there's a motion and see if there's discussion.
Okay. At the very least, I hope that we have a motion to support our municipal court judge and his actions. He has police officers that are here with their guns because they are here to testify, and so we have, we have a heightened presence of police officers in the room. And the idea that people need one for concealed carry is probably limited. And we have professionals that are trained to deal with difficult situations, and I, I see Chief Lacy nodding his head in acknowledgement. So I'm gonna take that, that I didn't say something stupid. Beyond that, the second question is a policy question for the city council to address concerning open meetings and the safety of our citizenry. So I'm going to entertain a motion to...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move that we approve Resolution R. 2017-24 with the exception of Section Three.
Okay. We have a motion. Do I have a second on that motion?
I think so.
Okay, Section Three reads, Section Two reads, "The city has consulted with the municipal court and hereby prohibits handgun license holders from carrying in city courtrooms. Court officers and portions of the building identified as essential function of the court and court offices identified in the schematic as Exhibit A. In addition, Exhibit B reflects the specific language for signage for the relevant portion of the court and court offices." Okay. Section Three reads, which is the part that Mike has specifically excluded, "The city also prohibits handgun license holders from carrying in rooms that are subject to the Open Meetings Act as identified in the schematic in Exhibit C. In addition, Exhibit D reflects the specific statutory language for the signage for each room, rooms where the governmental entity meetings are held, subject to the Open Meetings Act." So Mike is, is requesting that we strike the language concerning the Open Meetings Act.
I also have just another probably addition you need to strike of the, in the last whereas, it talks about the, the city believes it's beneficial for the safety of all participants and attendees to prohibit the carrying of handguns in municipal court, court offices. And then there's that section, or a government meeting that's subject to the Open Meetings Act. And I think that should be struck, that, that phrase there. To be consistent with your motion.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, Bob is, we have a motion from Mike and a second from Bob. We're now open for discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, Mike? Yes?
I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but why do we need the resolution on the courts when statute law says you can't carry a gun of any kind inside a courtroom, period? There's no exception for that. No signage is even required.
That's a good question. I, I'll ask Dan, and I can follow up if, 'cause I asked that question to Charlie too.
Right, and, and this, it's because we're in a shared facility. It's not a standalone court building, and so it was recommended back when these changes went into effect January 2016, that in shared facilities, that you delineate. And we recommended that, that the councils approve the orders of the municipal court judge, and that you post signs noting that it's, it's only during those court hours. Because it's hard to differentiate, you know, like, this is open meetings, but during the day, this could, the court's held in here, right? So this is a courtroom. So it's for that purpose, because it's a multi-use facility.
Okay, the signage is gonna be something specifically stating that, like a temporary sign that you're gonna put on a, on a stand or an A-frame?
Right, it cites the Penal Code provision on, on weapons in court.
Right, it's not a, it's not a thirty odd six, thirty odd seven sign. It's just, it's just the statute law.
That's correct.
Okay, okay, that's fine. I was just curious.
Okay. Any other discussion questions? Michelle?
I'm not sure why, oh, sorry. I'm not sure why we wouldn't also do it during meetings of the Open Meetings Act. I mean, I have a CHL, but I don't bring my gun anywhere near city hall. Why wouldn't we do that? If we're doing it for the court, why wouldn't we do it for us?
Because the law says, under, I think it's forty-six dash, or point oh-three-five I, that you must have the signs posted to restrict in an open meetings?
Yes, but my question is, I think we should restrict it for both. Is, I guess is my statement, or question.
Including licensed carries?
We should post that there's, I honestly thought that we weren't allowed to bring guns, even with a CHL license carry, into council now.
It used to be originally, but they changed that about five years ago, and it's, I believe it's Section I.
No, no, but I, for our council, I thought we had that, I mean, for our city, I thought we had that already as a rule, and we weren't allowed to bring our weapons. I don't know why I thought that, but...
Okay. Any other discussion? Mike?
My, my answer to the question, why should, should we exclude the city council or the, the meetings? People with a permit to carry have undergone a background check. They've undergone training, they've passed the test. And saying that you, in order to attend a, a city council meeting, you have to be unarmed and depend on someone else to, to look out for you, I think is unreasonable. The other side is, if we wanna consider Sutherland Springs, the shooting started outside, through the window. What do we have? We have windows that give us a great shot that wouldn't be subject to the, to the metal detector. I just think that, I, I think including the, the city council meetings and the, the Open Meetings Act meetings is overkill once again.
Okay. Any further?
Well, we're gonna have at least two or three police officers with guns. The fire chief also has a gun. I don't know.
Okay.
And just because everybody passed the test and has a CHL, doesn't mean I want them bringing their guns here.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else that they'd like to add? Mike?
Well, I agree completely with Alderman Simpson. I mean, we, you know, we have the law on our side. State law says we can do this unless those signs are posted, and then it's only criminal trespass. I, I would not be in favor of entering, personally, I never go anywhere without my handgun. I, I, it, it, it goes in my, my holster before my wallet. I've walked out the house without my wallet before, but I've never left my pistol at home. And any place that posts a thirty odd six sign, if I do not have to enter it for whatever reason, and usually it's only a medical reason, I will go somewhere else and trade somewhere else. And I may have to take that position here if that's what happens. I have no problem with the open carry restrictions. That is uncomfortable to a lot of people. But I, I don't care. I think we should allow people to come in here. I think they should, I think they should let the chief or whoever is on duty, let them know, "I'm an LTC, and I'm carrying." You know, just do it quietly. They should know. I think the police officers should know who in here is carrying a weapon. I have no problem with that, but they don't have to, you know, they can't bring it out and say, "Hey, look what I bought." But no, don't, leave it alone. Let the people that are trained to do it defend themselves if they have to. And keep in mind, as, as it was pointed out, the Sutherland Springs incident started outside. And keep in mind, as it was pointed out, the Sutherland Springs incident started outside, and it was not a police officer that ended it, it was a private citizen. So...
Any further comments? Further discussion? We have a motion to approve Resolution R. 2017-024, striking Section 3 and the last part of the final whereas clause. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Same sign. Motion passes three to one. We're now to Item 7. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will only be considered at the request of one or more aldermen. Coincident with each listed item, discussion will generally occur. Does anyone want to discuss any of the items in Item 7? We'll proceed to Item 8. All matters consisted under this... All items listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda that will be considered separately. Do I have a motion to approve and/or accept Items 8.1 through 8.6?
Pulling 8.6.
Okay, we'd like to pull 8.6. Do I have a motion to approve Items 8.1 through 8.5?
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Mike Simpson, seconded by Michelle Ross, to approve Items 8.1 through 8.5. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We're now open for discussion on Item 8.6. Michelle, you asked to pull this, so I'm going to turn this over to you.
Because I was in the meeting when we were discussing dates, and the discussion for Independence Day came up, and this year it falls on a Wednesday. So we were having a discussion on whether the event should fall on the prior Saturday, which is the 30th of June, or the following Saturday, and I thought we had gotten down to July 4th and the 30th as possible dates, and we were going to bring it here for discussion to make a decision. One of the things that we had asked was that we made some calls to people who have children and asked them when they thought that they'd be going in and out of town, or if people were going to be traveling, and did it matter? And the other issue was having it the 30th would be better than having it the week after, because we think you either have to have it on the day or before, or people are going to, like, not want to bother attending. They'll be all July 4th out if we held it the next weekend. So we had that discussion, and we did not, I know, come up with a date, and so we were going to discuss it here.
What is the date that you're recommending, Michelle?
I think it ought to be... Well, I don't care if it's July 4th or it's the 30th. I mean, for staffing purposes, they're off on the 4th, so that's double pay and everybody, you know, a bunch of people having to work.
So are you proposing the 30th, then?
So the 30th would be reasonable if...
Okay. So you're requesting to approve the dates specified with July the... With June the 30th as our Independence Day celebration?
Correct.
Okay, do I have a... You're making a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Bob is second in the motion. There being no further discussion, all in favor... Oh, you want to discuss it? Okay.
I mean, the July the 4th is Independence Day, and I think that's what we ought to do, so I'm a big believer in that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mike?
We did it the Saturday before, but this past year, but it was a Monday, wasn't it?
No, we did it Thursday.
I know, but it was Tuesday. It was Tuesday, yeah. I don't know, I think that it's... It seems odd to have it Independence Day on June 30th. I would have to go with the 4th, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I would rather stay with the 4th.
Do we have any other discussion?
Yeah, we have kids.
Well, just thinking through, you know, how that week plays out...
Turn it on.
Mike?
Thinking how that week plays out, and thinking about families coming and just, you know, general attendance. You know, July 4th being on a Wednesday, most people try to vacation, if they can pull that off, they take the 4th, 5th, and 6th off, which will be Wednesday through Friday. They might try to be out of town, so Wednesday may not be very well attended. June 30th, because they would have a five-day weekend if they did July 4th through the next weekend. If they do June 30th, if those people aren't going to go on vacation, they're going to celebrate July 4th and spend a long weekend. They're not going to go out of town the weekend before typically, and that was my thought about having it on Saturday, June 30th. We might get better attendance because of those factors. I'm not against having it on the 4th on Wednesday. I think our attendance would be better on Saturday, the prior Saturday, the 30th.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion? There being no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
The mayor votes with the June 30th, so it is June 30th. Motion carries. We're now to Item number nine. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, point of procedure. We had previously stated that we were going to discuss whether or not to have a December Are we going to have a December meeting?
The... Well, that's not on the agenda this evening, but Bill will pull the council members, and then we will make... We will advise people on... If a council member wants to have the meeting, then we will have the meeting.
Okay.
But if nobody wants to have a meeting, Mike, our traditional approach has been, if there are no agenda items, then we will not have a meeting.
Okay, then I would request an excused absence from the December meeting, because I will be in the Panama Canal at that point.
Thank you very much for giving us advance notice. I appreciate that very much. I appreciate the courtesy of that.
Well, yeah, but I'm requesting an excused absence, because without it, it's a $3 fine.
Yes, it is.
Believe it or not, we'll cover you.
Yeah. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mike, Colmire, it's second of the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries.